I now declare the Plano City Council Preliminary Open Meeting is reconvened into open session. That all council members are present. Councilmember Homer is on her way. Our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration and action resulting from the executive session. Our next item is review of bulky waste pilot program. Andrea Park.
Let's try that again. Okay, there we go. Good evening. I'm Andrea Park, Assistant Director of Public Works Community Services Division, and I will be providing you with a very brief overview of community services as well as an update and recommendation for the bulky waste pilot program. The Community Services Division is comprised of 140 staff members and we have a $15.7 million operating budget. We are comprised of a business unit, fleet services, environmental waste services, compost and commercial and trash recycling. Our business unit is responsible for our administrative services group as well as our asset management group. This asset management group was rolled out about six years ago, and in that time they have been very busy with about little under 99,000 requests. We have 192 users. We support 680,000 assets and support streets, drainage water, sewer and signs and traffic. Our fleet services department maintains safe, efficient and dependable vehicles throughout the city. We are responsible for the purchase of vehicles and equipment, and we manage the equipment replacement fund. We currently have 2,480 pieces of equipment valued at $113 million, and we have been utilizing a web-based fleet management system called Faster, which allows us for real-time reporting and an increased access to key performance measures. We also are responsible for the fueling needs throughout the city. Last fiscal year, we had 1.2 million gallons of usage at the cost of $4.7 million. We also have a fuel tanker that we deploy during emergency response for generators and for operations. We also are at about 95% of the design completion for the High Point Fueling Station, which was approved in the last bond election. And this is just a graphic that I'll skip through for the sake of time, but it's just to illustrate the number of departments that we impact in fleet. Environmental Waste Services, this group is responsible for the residential waste and recycling collection, landscape trimmings, household chemicals, bulky waste collection, compost operations, commercial waste and recycling coordination, and our EWS customer call service center. And fiscal year 2223, we had just under 75,000 customers. We made over 9 million stops for collections. We had 53,760 residential tons make it to the landfill, a little less than 16,000 tons recycled. We collected just under 20,000 tons of yard trimmings, 33,000 gallons of household waste, and did all of that with a customer satisfaction rating of 99%. It's not me. It's all of the staff. Okay, so with those land, or I'm sorry, the yard debris trimmings mentioned on the previous slide, those are processed through our composting product, our composting operation resulting in the sale of Texas Pure products. Texas Pure diverts approximately 60,000 tons of yard debris from the landfill. If you're not familiar, we basically like collect waste collections, yard waste from Plano, Allen, Frisco, McKinnon and Richardson. We process that at the Custer Road Transfer Station and the 121 Regional Landfill. And all of this is available for sale, bags bulk pickup and delivery. If you have never seen those locations, the photo on the left is Custer Road where most materials are dropped off, and we do an initial screening of the material. And then the picture on the right is the 121 landfill where we actually do our composting operations and coloring of mulching and making of mixtures of soils. Okay, and what we are here for on your agenda, the bulky waste program. So the standard bulky waste program that is citywide is collected one day each month. This is going to be items that do not fit into the standard 95 gallon cart. Your crews drive by collection points, your standard collection points, which is typically going to be in the alley, and they collect materials that meet the bulky waste program guidelines. This does not include yard brush, debris, trees or items containing Freon. Those all are special paid collections. So back in February of 2018, we launched the On Call Collections Pilot Program. This affected about 4,774 homes located in the dark shaded gray areas to the east and west of Central Expressway. The pilot program allowed for residents to schedule one bulky waste pickup per week, and it included big items as well as large yard debris. The goals at the time were to reduce the wear and tear on our vehicles and lower fuel consumption as well as improving the flow in the alleys by removing a lot of that bulky waste from the alleyways. What we learned through the past six years, we learned that this program created a lot of resident confusion on scheduling requirements, especially in high turnover areas. And what I mean by that is a lot of the areas that have a lot of rentals. We started increase in mixed piles of trash and brush, which then affected our ability to be able to compost that equipment and turn it into other, or not equipment, but the trash collections contaminated the brush is what I'm trying to say, so we couldn't use it. We had challenges with collection points. Examples of that would include, we had a lot of residents who said it was difficult for one reason or another to move their items to the front as opposed to put it in the alley. So despite trying to move things from the alley, we were still putting it in the alley to make those requests. We had a lot of resident complaints regarding the bulk items out on the curbs. It became very difficult for our Neighborhood Services Group to monitor for violations because they were not aware of when the different pickup had been scheduled. There was no set schedule for them to follow. And then we also were determined what would it cost, what equipment would be needed to roll this out citywide, and it would be pretty financially difficult right now, especially with increased equipment cost. It would have been about four additional drivers and 11 boom trucks that we would need to move this out citywide. It is our recommendation at this time to end this particular pilot program effective July 1st. We would like to work with our Communications and Community Outreach Group to develop a message to those that are in the pilot areas. We would notify them no later than May 1st to allow for adequate notice. And while this particular program didn't meet the goals that we were initially looking for, we would like to continue to explore other bulky waste practices moving forward. And with that, I will happily answer any questions.
So Mayor and Council, real quick, this is a perfect example of a program that attempted some innovation, tried things, but found that within the community and within the practices and the expectations, it just didn't work. A little bit too expensive, a little bit too complicated to work as a program, so going back to the old way of doing things is probably the most efficient path forward, and that's the recommendation we have at this time. So Ms. Park will handle any hard questions. I'll handle any easy ones. But beyond that, that's the path we intend to move forward.
Mayor, put down.
Is there a reason, if we know that it's not working, why we would wait to stop it until July 1st?
It's simply to provide notifications for the people that have utilized it, realize it's going to end, and that they will transition back to their one per month pickup and not an on-demand response.
And we think it's going to take that long for us to notify everyone?
If we can go faster, I assure you our Communications and Public Works will work to make it go faster.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very quick question. So you said this pilot program went on for six years?
Since 2018, yes.
So it was, was it, was there a grant or was there a proposal? What brought upon this pilot program in the first place, do you know?
Actually, would you like me to take that one?
If he knows the answers, he can have it.
I was, I was around back then. So this was, this was an effort to try to streamline going into a situation of just trying to provide better services. This was actually a staff-initiated program. This wasn't really done through, through any grant funds, which is why from an operational perspective, there would be additional costs to continue down that, down that path. But this was again, staff trying to be more innovative and trying to find cost savings, trying to find ways that we can do business in a more efficient and better manner, and it just didn't work out that way.
All right. Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly say kudos for having the open-mindedness to try something new. Double kudos for having the humility to say this isn't working, we're going to pivot away from it, and triple kudos for having the perseverance to say, you know, down the road, we're going to try another innovative idea. That's good stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. That's all? All right. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item three, short-term rental registration ordinance overview. Curtis Howard.
Hi. Mayor, council members, executive staff members, good evening. My name is Curtis Howard. I am the Director of Neighborhood Services, and I am here before you tonight to start talking to you about our proposed short-term rental registration ordinance. And I know that's a mouthful, and then answer any questions on it after I finish. So as you are well aware, this is the timeline that we've been on, and we're finally at a time towards the end of this timeline where we're starting to give you recommendations based upon the information that we have collected over, you know, the past year and a half at least on short-term rentals and put those before you in this, at least at this part in this proposed registration program. You've got information from the final report from the Short-Term Rental Task Force, and they provided recommendations from all the work that they did regarding, hey, how to best handle the issue of short-term rentals here in Plano. They came up with kind of four areas they want you to deal with, and one is registration. In addition to that, it's going to be training and for property owners, short-term rental property owners. Additional areas that they want to address is zoning, and then also finally kind of what to do with those problem issues. Do we have any way of dealing with those? So tonight's presentation is going to be on the Short-Term Rental Registration Program and the training that will be incorporated in that program. And the, as the Short-Term Rental Task Force met, they came up with 14 proposals, and these recommendations have been incorporated into the ordinance that I will be addressing tonight. In addition, they talked about training, and so the, the recommendations that they had on training, on a training program or training course for short-term rental owners will also be incorporated in what I discuss tonight. So with that, so we have a proposed ordinance, and if my understanding of Roman numerals continues to be correct, that is Article 24, Registration of Short-Term Rental Properties. And with that, with this, I do want to kind of just take a moment to acknowledge all the good work that Ms. Pitt, Ms. Memes, her, her group did, Ms. Day, her group did, those folks at Neighborhood Services way before I got there to come up with what we have and what we are presenting for you tonight. So what are we talking about as far as a registration? So just generally, what we're looking at is we're going to say that if you are a short-term rental operator here in the city of Plano, that you will have to operate that under a valid registration. In order, in order to get that registration, what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to show that you have the legal right to be a short-term rental operator, and that'll either be through the zoning process, through a special use permit, or if you've been part of the grandfathering process that we've put in place over the past year. Also, one of the things that we're looking at is if you're a multifamily, let's say, or a, an apartment complex, condo complex, and you have several of them, each individual unit will have to have its own registration. Once you, once you meet all those requirements, then you have a application process. So we've got the application, and that's going to, first start off, one of the things that you're going to have to do is you're going to have to make sure that, that you give us your contact information. So all owners, operators, and we want names, addresses, phone numbers, email addresses of those folks. And in addition to that, one of the requirements is going to be, there's going to be designated contacts if you are a owner or operator that either, let's say, live outside the area or, or maybe a corporate owner. And so that designated contact, we want the information from, for those designated contacts. Again, name, address, phone number, email address, so we'll be able to get in touch with them. In addition to that, part of this registration process will include a copy of the floor plan, so we can understand what the, what the layout will be like, and also explain where the safety equipment is. Fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors will be part of that. Photographs of all rooms and all those internal areas where if you're having a short-term rental, that people are going to be living. So we have to provide those photographs. You have to have a minimum of a $1 million liability insurance policy per occurrence, contact information of the owner's association, if there's an association that's involved. And then one of the things that we're going to ask is a list of all platforms, all methods in which you advertise. So we want that, if they're online platforms, not only the, the name, but also a link to that online platform. We want a copy of the rules, the host rules, because that is part of this ordinance will be posted at that short-term rental property. And then finally, we will come up with a way where short-term rental owners can acknowledge the fact that what the ordinances are, what their responsibilities are, and what the penalties are if they fail to abide by the ordinance. In addition, we talked about having this training component as part of the registration process, and that training component is going to include information such as, you know, what are the, what does the ordinance require of short-term rental owners? What are the noise regulations here in Plano? What are the parking requirements that we have within the city? What's the trash pickup process, speaking of, you know, we've talked about bulk waste, but what's the trash pickup process that we have? Also, information on human trafficking and awareness for short-term rental owners, and then a property maintenance requirements, because of course, we certainly want to make sure that, like all of our housing stock, that they keep their houses looking, looking good. One of the things that we're going to ask is, as you consider this ordinance, is, you know, we would propose to have a rebate process. So we're looking at a $300 registration fee, and, and potentially, if you go through this training program that we are, that we're going to be offering, that you get somewhere between 7,500 bucks back as part of that, so. Designated contacts, kind of as, as we talked about, one of the things that is going to be required and that we want to make sure is if we have a problem, that we can reach out to somebody and that person can respond within a very short period of time. Here, we've got listed an hour to, to hopefully resolve that problem. And so they've got to be accessible by telephone, again, able to respond with one hour, have the, the ability and the power to act if we have guests there. And then finally, we included a recommendation that we'd like the person to be in the DFW area. We don't necessarily have the ability to enforce that sort of thing, but if they can, as long as they are able to respond within that timeframe is what we're looking for. The registration, basically renewal terms is, we're looking at an initial registration, and then it will renew every year. It's $300. It would be valid unless something happens, such as we change ownership of the house or if for some reason it was suspended or revoked in some form or fashion. And then we're going to ask that that be updated annually. We also propose that, of course, as part of that, this ordinance we have in there, that they pay occupancy tax and they're subject to an audit if there's a question, and also require that owners perform an annual self-inspection to make sure that their property still conformed to the requirements set out in this ordinance. One of the requirements is going to be a process to make sure that we monitor what's going on. And so that's going to be noise monitoring, and then also it says electronic monitoring, which is going to be video monitoring. What we're looking at is, you know, they certainly have companies out there that short-term rental property owners can, can, can purchase, and what it'll do is it will measure the decibel levels or the noise inside and outside a, a place, and it will have an app, so owners will be able to set what the decibel levels are. If they start becoming too, too high, that app will then notify the owner that there might be a problem at that short-term rental. And then also the outdoor electronic monitoring is going to be video monitoring in those places where somebody does not have a right to privacy. And then that, that, those requirements are only for that off-site management for STR, so we're not looking, if we've got somebody who's living onsite, then you're not, you're not going to need that under this ordinance. Also require the display of the registration certificate and the host rules, so people know how many guests they can have there and what the noise requirements are. This ordinance also proposes to prohibit advertising, promoting or allowing the use of that property as an assembly hall. And then when we talk about the administrative sanctions that go along with this, we've got some definitions. And so definitions are going to, first of all, include nuisance, nuisance incident, and this is going to be one of those quality of life issues that we have in our neighborhoods. So basically, it's going to be an incident involving criminal conduct committed at an STR property by somebody who is staying there, and that, that conduct tends to substantially interfere with the use or enjoyment of private or public property by causing unreasonable discomfort or annoyance to persons of ordinary sensibilities attempting to use and enjoy their property, including but not limited to conduct involving assault, sexual misconduct, public order indecency, alcohol, drugs, weapons, noise, trash and parking. So that's going to be a nuisance incident, and along with that definition, one of the things that we've done is we've included a presumption in there. So if either law enforcement or code enforcement ends up taking an enforcement action, there is a presumption that, that that was a nuisance, nuisance incident. So if we're looking at proving that at a later time and some sort of judicial proceeding, that would be easier to do. And then in addition to nuisance incident, we have a serious incident, and as, of course, you can imagine, that's going to be something that's more serious. So again, criminal conduct that's committed at an STR by somebody who is staying at the STR and that substantially interferes with the use or enjoyment of private or public property and is reasonably likely to induce fear in persons of ordinary sensibilities, including but not limited to conduct involving child abuse, sexual offenses, discharge of a firearm, and offenses causing serious bodily injury and/or death. And so the administrative portion of this is what we're looking at, is we're looking at the ability to deny, suspend or revoke somebody's registration if they are either going to be applying for it or if they have it already. So first of all, we can deny for three months an application if somebody commits some sort of administrative violations. And what we're looking at is kind of in this process, if they do something that is not, is not later discussed in here but violates the ordinance, then it would be up to a three month, three month suspension or denial. We also include a three-month denial or suspension for the specific, specific actions of maintaining or failing to maintain or provide insurance, that $1 million liability policy, or designate and ensure the availability of a contact person. So that's going to be up to a three-month suspension there. We're going to increase that penalty up to a six-months denial or suspension if it results from the occurrence of a nuisance incident, a quality of life issue that we discussed just a few moments ago, at a, at the premise of a short-term rental. And then we're going to increase that up to a potential one-year denial or suspension if you have a situation where you've got two or more nuisance, nuisance incidents within a 12-month period, or one serious incident in which the registrant was aware of but consciously disregarded a substantial risk of the serious incident occurring. So it's kind of like reckless behavior on the part of that short-term rental owner or operator. And then finally, we also have a potential one-year denial or suspension if the STR was operated, advertised or promoted, and they did not have a valid registration. Registration can be, may be permanently denied or revoked if it cannot be legally used as a short-term rental. So if there's a zoning issue, or let's say the HOA ends up changing their bylaws and prohibiting short-term rentals, something like that would allow us to revoke that permanently. So since we have an administrative process in place, we also have due process. So if somebody, if, if somebody gets a notice that we are going to suspend or revoke or deny their short-term rental, rental registration application, then they can appeal that. So if it's an appeal based upon the zoning issue, the zoning ordinance has a process in place, and so they will use that zoning ordinance process for that, for that denial or suspension. All other appeals will basically be submitted to the department, the Director of Neighborhood Services or whichever director the city manager designates for that purpose, who will conduct a hearing. Based on evidence presented, the directors then shall sustain, modify or rescind that initial determination. An applicant can then appeal that up to the city manager and, or, and his or her designate, and then that determination by the city manager's office will be final. In addition to this administrative framework that I've just discussed, we also have a criminal offense, so it will be a Class C misdemeanor with a, with a fine not to exceed up to $500. And so basically, what we're looking at is, in addition to the administrative sanctions that may be imposed, you could have criminal sanctions for violating the terms of this And there's a requirement for the hosting platform, so whether it's Verbo or Airbnb, one of those places, they shall provide a notice to a person listing on the STR as basically a short-term rental. We have a code of ordinances here, and it would be illegal to operate one within the city of Plano unless you are registered. And with that, I will take any questions you may have on this proposal.
You want to hear the speakers first?
I think this is just a question, really.
Real quick.
All right, real quick. When we said the contact must be able to respond within an hour, can you define what respond means?
And, and that is not defined in here, but what we're looking at is we're looking at a reasonable response. So if they can take care of the problem within an hour, however they do it, then that would be a response. So if they can make a phone call, if they need to appear in person, however they need to do it.
All right. Second question was really need clarification on section six point or dash 735 on registration. If STR has multiple rooms, they most register, in other words, instead of renting the whole house to an individual family, they have three rooms and they rented out three individually. Do they have to register three separate times?
No, it would, that would be one property. So the, the multiple registration would be, for example, if you have an apartment complex that had several apartments in there that they, that that complex was using, that would require three separate registrations. If it's one single parcel of property, then it would just be one registration.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All of these are enforcement issues, questions that I have. So on the local contacts and rep that Rick just asked about, and there, there's a requirement for a one-hour window where they have to contact, what is the remedy if they don't?
Well, so at that point, if they don't, then what we can look at is, we can look at, as an administrative process is, is to revoke their registration or suspend their registration.
So if they don't respond within one hour, then we consider that to be a violation, and then that would be...
That could be a violation. Correct.
And that would be considered a suspension?
We would go through the process.
Okay.
So.
All right. And the second one also, with regard to the definition nuisance and serious incident?
Yes.
So I, I... So, um, I, I understand you define those, but, um, all the definitions in there with regard to the abuse, are you, are you using the definitions from the penal code in order to define those violations? Do you understand what I'm saying?
With, with, within our administrative remedies and within our, our, our criminal remedies, uh, you know, there is going to be, generally, it's going to be, um, a lot of those are going to be very broad, right? Sexual offenses.
Right.
So they're broad enough to incorporate what would be a sexual offense. And when we, when we talk about that, it is a criminal, it's criminal conduct. So it's going to be based upon the penal code definitions of, of those things.
Is that somewhere it said that we're going to be defining these abuses or offenses based on the Texas penal code, or?
Uh, other than the fact that it references, references criminal conduct in the definition, that's the reference to criminal conduct in the, you know, what I think we could probably commonly, uh, say within the state of Texas.
All right. And then the Class C violation, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't quite catch the Class C violation. Is it for any type of violation? Let's say you didn't contact back in an hour, is that considered a Class C violation?
So a lot of the, uh, requirements in here, they are listed in that, in that portion of the ordinance where it specifically said, will, will point those out. And so whether or not the, the contact in an hour, I'd have to check and see if that's one of them. But a lot of the provisions that we have, uh, throughout the ordinance are specifically laid out in that Class C portion. And let's see, fail, it's fail to designate a contact, uh, contact is required, uh, fail to ensure the designated contact is available and authorized to act, so in compliance with this article.
It is.
So that could be, that could be a, a criminal violation under this offense.
Thank you.
Hey Curtis, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you.
A quick question for you, following up on, uh, what, uh, Deputy Mayor Two had asked here. We're, we're using, uh, the potential criminal offense maybe rather than will be, i- is that because that we have administrative discretion, whether we would pursue the Class C, or is it some other reason?
Certainly, along with any sort of enforcement, there's going to be discretion involved. And so, uh, so we, we use language like may that gives the enforcement, uh, personnel the ability to make that determination. Uh, because we certainly don't want to make it a, a must, because, you know, there's going to be all sorts of situations that occur, uh, that, you know, you may not, you not, may not want to take enforcement action.
Right.
So, so that, we, we, you know, we allow the, we allow either our, our police or our neighbors or services personnel who do the enforcement activities here in the city of Plano, that discretion to.
Got you. But, but it, it is in there to, I guess, prevent, uh, folks from continually having the same offenses over and over again, that then we do have this, and they, they understand that there will be financial and Class C misdemeanor consequences.
Like anything else, if you have somebody who is irresponsible in the way they do something, right? And maybe they've gotten a warning, uh, maybe they've gotten, uh, a couple, there's going to be a point in time where, you know, I mean, we've got, we've got this enforcement framework in place, and that can certainly happen.
Great. Thanks, Curtis.
So, and, and I do want to point out, this is, this is not necessarily the only tool. This is one tool and equivalent of arrows that we have. We certainly can use other, uh, enforcement mechanisms or other, uh, ways of, of making sure that people comply with the law and, uh, and are, are good neighbors. And so, you know, and like stuff that we've been doing already, this will give us an additional tour, tool for that.
Councilmember Rick Adeli.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Curtis, for that great presentation. Um, I just have a, a couple of questions. First, on section six dash seven forty-two, I noticed in the memo that the, uh, the, uh, bullet point from the STR Task Force to which this section, I think, is kind of responding, mentioned cameras.
Right.
And this section only talks about electronic monitoring and noise monitoring in the outdoor area. Um, I was just curious, uh, why not cameras, uh, especially since that was part of what the STR Task Force appears to have discussed? And, you know, being on camera would deter illegal behavior. We've had reports of illegal drug use in front yards, nudity, things of that nature. And, you know, you would imagine, you know, a conspicuous camera might deter some of that behavior. So I just wanted to get some, uh, I guess, background on the thought process behind that.
Feedback on that. And the way I read the ordinance is even though it doesn't say video, uh, noise is going to be that what I kind of discussed, which, uh, one of those, one of those companies that, that has that sort of thing that monitors decibel levels.
Mm-hmm.
And then the outdoor electronic monitoring would be the camera. Uh, you know, and it might, it might be that we could word that better, because that, I understand that's what the, uh, short-term, the task force said. Uh, but in there, that, I equate that to, to, to a video camera, you know, probably on the outside, the front of the house, because you got to be careful where you start putting cameras, because not only do cameras record video, they also record audio. So, you know, that's, that's going to be something that, uh, we got to tread lightly around.
Certainly. And that, that's something I, I would love to see clarified, just because it read to me like that could be satisfied by electronic monitoring of audio only. And I think video monitoring would be important, because somebody could be, you know, quietly breaking the law in the front yard, and, you know, I, I think we would want video of that, that as well. Uh, and, uh, then section, uh, six dash seven forty-five, this is, you know, the topic of a lot of discussion already, the suspension, denial, revocation procedure. Um, I think this is well thought out, but one question I had about that related to, uh, the more serious of the serious incidents. You know, we, we've had, uh, you know, at least one instance where there was a prostitution ring being run out of an STR, and another instance that we've heard a lot about, you know, here at, at these meetings, uh, where there was very dangerous gunfire that entered a child's bedroom, and one-year, uh, you know, suspension seems light for that. I, I would love to see for something that serious that it's a permanent revocation, but if that's not workable, you know, at least 10 years or 20 years or something like, I mean, because that's, that's very serious, you know, dangerous conduct.
Certainly. And I, and I think that, uh, it, just kind of as I referred to before, is, you know, we talk about this process, this, this, this probably the administrative process or the, uh, the criminal sanctions, this is going to be one tool. So, you know, if you've got somebody who's engaged in criminal behavior, so if it is, let's say prostitution, uh, I mean, first of all, you know, what we're talking about, because there's, there's several entities here, right? You've got the property owner potentially, which could be a person, could be a, a corporation. Uh, you have potentially the, the property manager.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then you've also got those that are visiting the short-term rental. So who are we holding responsible? So if somebody commits an act, I mean, if they're engaged in prostitution, certainly you're probably going to be able to go after those people under our normal penal code violations. So, you know, whatever, whatever that's going to consist of. Now, holding other people responsible, if you have a, a, a short-term rental owner that, let's say, uh, is, is running that sort of operation out of a short-term rental, and he's involved or she's involved in the criminal conspiracy, you know, I mean, our, our criminal violation or, you know, we can certainly go through the, the, the administrative process and revoke or, or suspend their, uh, their, uh, short-term rental registration. They may have other fish to fry also, that, uh, that can, can be used, right?
Sure.
Again, so.
And, and, and that makes sense. I still, well, and I guess this is for a later discussion, but I'd, I'd love to see, you know, consideration given to, um, you know, for really serious incidents, you know, maybe a, an even longer revocation or perhaps even permanent. That's just my, my two cents. Anyway, thank you for the well-thought-out ordinance, Curtis.
Just a quick follow-on to Councilman Rick Adeli's question. So in cases where there's, um, actual ongoing criminal activity or criminal conspiracy, certainly, um, that would be dealt with, uh, as such. Several years ago, we had, uh, a young man who was murdered at an STR. That was just part of a party. So I inferred at least that Councilman Rick Adeli was asking about serious incidents, which may not, um, indicate that the property owner was complicit in that, it was just something that happened by virtue of operating an STR. Um, but that something, an incident like that might lead to, uh, a longer-term, uh, suspension or revocation.
Understood. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Curtis.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we have, um, 27 speakers, and what, what I'd like for all of you to, to do tonight, we're really focusing on the registration ordinance overview, and I'd like you to give us a yes or a no, and why you're either for it or not for it. That would help us a whole lot. We're also, um, going to ask you to speak for a minute and a half. Um, we're not going to get all of you in before we have to stop and start our regular meeting, because we only have about 15 minutes before we have to start the regular meeting, and then we'll continue with the speakers once we finish the opening of the regular meeting. So if that's, everybody understands that, what we'd really like for, for you to give us your approval or disapproval of this registration overview and why. So Lisa?
Okay. The first speaker was supposed to be on Zoom, but I will call their name just in case they're here. It's Dumbingo Engo. Okay. Then we'll move on to Bill France, who will be followed by Marla Kiriakos.
Was this the bulky waste? Uh, I get confused as bulky waste sometimes. I wasn't sure. Um, sorry, bad humor. Um, Mayor Muns, members of City Council, city staff, good evening. Uh, my name is Bill France. Tonight, I'm here once again speaking on behalf of my neighbors in the Plano-Texas Neighborhood Coalition. We are here to reaffirm our strong opposition to the presence and proliferation of short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods. I stand before you tonight in support of strong enforceable laws that will protect our community from the behavior we have witnessed and continue to endure. Our community has faced challenges stemming from unregulated short-term rentals, leading to disruptive and sometimes lawless behavior that threatens the safety and security of our neighborhoods. We cannot afford to turn a blind eye to the negative impacts of uncontrolled short-term rentals any longer. The incidence of nor- noise disturbances, property damage, and even criminal activity have reached unacceptable levels. It is imperative that we take action to protect the well-being of our residents and the integrity of our community. More fundamentally, homes, housing a revolving door of strangers destroy the sense of safety, security, and community that are the hallmark of single-family residential neighborhoods, and the very reasons homeowners made what is often the largest investment of their lives. Thank you very much for your help in maintaining the fabric of our neighborhoods.
Good evening, Mayor Muns and councilmembers. I'm Marla Kiriakos, a 40-year resident of Plano and a member of TNC Plano. I oppose STRs in residential neighborhoods, but will accept them with a very strong registration and ordinance. We had hoped to remove all STRs from single-family residential neighborhoods, but in the spirit of compromise, the task force endorsed grandfathering all existing STRs, which we can accept only if there are tools in place to address and remove the bad actors. Um, the STR owners that are here tonight represent the upside of this situation, the good ones. But no matter what these supporters promise, Airbnb itself stated in their IPO documents filed with the SEC that they have no control over bad actors. I quote from their SEC filing, "We have no control over the actions of our users and other third parties during the guest stay, and therefore we cannot guarantee the safety of our hosts, guests, and third parties. The actions of hosts, guests, and third parties have resulted in fatalities, injuries, bodily harm, fraud, invasion of privacy, property damage. We do not verify the identity of our hosts and guests, nor do we verify or screen third parties who may be present during a reservation made through our platform." So we're on our own to protect the Plano citizens from the dangers that STRs create in our neighborhoods. Um, while Plano may not be a vacation city, we're clearly a geographical STR target for metro-area vacationers, because we have a straight shot to downtown Dallas, and to Frisco, and to DFW Airport, so let's keep that in mind. We've not worked for two years to craft a weak registration ordinance. If we intend to grandfather STRs in our residential neighborhoods rather than eliminate them, please be sure you allow us the tools to keep our neighborhoods safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Stephen Kiriakos, followed by Rebecca Baca.
My name is Stephen Kiriakos, and I'm a 21-year resident of Plano. Uh, to answer your question, uh, for the short-term rental registration ordinance, yes, but with some caveats that I'll point out. Uh, I'd like to speak to the importance of the legality and forcibility of the short-term rental ordinance and the registration documents. I believe this is important, as my wife just pointed out earlier. Airbnb is not taking responsibility for the liability of their users or other parties, no pun intended. Uh, last summer, the Texas State Legislature showed a huge, huge interest in doing your job. Uh, House Bills 2665 and 2367 are prime examples concerning the regulation of residential amenities and rentals, STRs, by the state. So strong local leadership and enforceable, um, ordinances were effective in deterring these bills last summer in Austin, so we need to keep that up. Finally, many cities have gone before us. Uh, they've put out, uh, their ordinances, and they have failed to pass the sniff test in the legal scrutiny of these ordinances. So we've, we've seen others fail where we need to prevail. So what do we do? Well, the best fence, the, the best defense is a good offense, right? So, uh, a few examples. Um, one in particular, the definitions in both the ordinance and the registration. One-room bedroom. One room could be the living room, and the surrounding rooms are free. So in effect, the registration would say a one-room bed and breakfast is just fine. So we really need to get down to the dirty details of what do these definitions means, mean, and how are they applied legally? So, um, as far as that is concerned, also, we have different definitions also complicating enforcement and registration. One-room BMB, two-to-five-room BMB, vacation rentals, and also seasonal rentals.
Stephen.
Yes.
We got to wrap it up.
Oh, I thought that was my 10 seconds. Oh, that was it. My bad. Sorry.
That was the whistle.
That's it. Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Rebecca Baca.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca, and I own a home in East Plano. It's my legal homestead, and I rent out a backyard cottage. Uh, I am in favor of short-term rental regulations. I am a responsible host, but today I wanted to speak about section six dash seven three six, the designated contact and the one-hour response time. Um, so my concern is three-part. The first part is the one-hour response. I feel that this one-hour response assumes that we don't have day jobs, that we have enough money to cover a staff for 24/7, but it's really just me and my husband, who both work full-time. So, um, I ask for a little bit of leeway on that response time. I did want to mention, I have an investment home in San Antonio that I went through the short-term rental process with. Um, they do also have similar regulations, but they only specify eight to five for a designated contact, and there's no language for the one-hour response. My second concern is that this, uh, this particular section doesn't designate who I need to answer a call from, so I don't know who's going to be calling me. Uh, the reason why this is important is because if I know who's going to call, I'll save the contact, I'll make it a favorite. Even when my phone is on, do not disturb, your call will come through. So that would just make it easy for me to comply with your requirement. Uh, the third concern is the consequences for not responding. I feel like this is just a administrative oversight, but the consequence would be, uh, permit gets revoked for three months. And so I feel that would be punitive and not corrective. Uh, so my, I ask that you please reconsider, uh, the consequences for the offense for it to match accordingly. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Asher, followed by Cindy Patillo.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Mark Asher. I live at 4237 McAllister Drive, Plano, 75093, and I'm a 14-year resident of Plano. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to the concerns raised here regarding short-term rental regulations. To address the question you raised, I'm in favor of short-term rental regulations, but not in its current proposed form. While on the surface, the proposed regulations may appear reasonable, without proper consideration of each item, we'll find ourselves victims to the law of unintended consequences. A specific example I wish to highlight is in section six dash seven four-three. Six dash seven four-three states, each STR shall provide in a conspicuous publicly accessible area inside the front entrance of the STR, is then followed by the specific various items, including registration certificate, contact information, local estate regulations, and host rules. What is not clearly articulated here is whether the intent of this section is to have the information clearly visited, visible to the renter, or to anyone passing by the property. The concern is that if the intent is the former, there should be wording to explicitly state that this notification is not required to be visible from outside of the premises, nor should publicly accessible mean that just anyone, i.e. a non-renter, should have access to go inside the premises to view the notifications. Worse, if the intent is the latter, then this will make it immediately apparent to anyone looking to rob the premises that it may be unoccupied at various times, making it a greater target for theft. This would be detrimental to the general safety of the neighborhood, as well as pose of specific, specific risk to the STR owner. The question I pose to the councils, whether there can be a clarification on what the intent is of the section- is of the section and worded in such a way to remove any ambiguity regarding whether the notice is to be visible from us and ensure we are not painting targets on our short-term rental properties. Thank you for your time.
Cindy Patillo, followed by Mark Pulliam and Greg Patillo.
Good evening. I'll try to answer your question as best I can. As you know, I've been here for two years talking about short-term rentals, and I still want what I've wanted all along, which is to have no short-term rentals in single-family residential neighborhoods. It appears likely that that is not going to happen, and that what will happen potentially will be no new short-term rentals in single-family residential neighborhoods. What that means is ironically, after fighting so hard about this for two years, because of the party house behind mine, I will likely end up with that thing grandfathered in and enshrined as a short-term rental that I will then get to live with until I choose to move out of that house. As a result, I'm still advocating for that. I still want this prohibition to be put into place, but I'm pointing out that the importance of the strength of the regulations and the registration requirements is what will make that tolerable. Tolerable for all of us who, if grandfathering happens, will end up with the exact house we were trying to get rid of being grandfathered in. Likewise, in areas where there are new short-term rentals, those folks deserve good, strong protections as well. You've heard it from both sides. We want to eliminate the bad actors, and we need strong regulations to do that. Thank you.
Mayor, Council members. My name is Mark Pulliam. I live at 248 London Drive here in Plano. We live in a single-family neighborhood that does not have an HOA. To summarize quickly, I'm in favor of the proposed registration. I was a member of the task force, and you've been presented with the work product from the task force. There was a lot of yelling and going back and forth and a lot of things. Not unanimous, supermajority basically agree with three things. I know there were four on Curtis's summary, but registration, limiting new rentals to commercial areas, a zoning matter, which will come up later, and giving the city the tools to remove bad actors. So, and these were all reported at the various public hearings and everything else. So most of the proposed terms in the ordinance reflect the public-stated interest in registering the current grandfathered units and to impose reasonable standards and rules of conduct for those STR owners and operators. The registration ordinance provides a process for handling and the treatment of bad actors. I urge the council to proceed with due diligence and debate on the proposed regulations and ordinances. Thank you. And approve the proposed registration ordinance for a public hearing in the next few weeks. Thank you very much.
Lisa, we'll, after Mr. Patillo speaks, we'll pause that and come back to that after our opening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Greg Patillo. I've been a Plano resident for more than 30 years. I believe the city's short-term rental registration and regulation ordinance should meet the following objectives. Provide guests visiting the city with the same protection that they would have if they were to use a hotel for lodging. Adequately compensate the city for the cost to administer registration and enforce regulatory compliance of short-term rental businesses and ensure all appropriate taxes are paid. Provide the city with the information necessary to effectively identify and redress noncompliant businesses. Protect neighbors from the encroachment of transient lodging businesses. Provide neighbors with an avenue for quick and effective resolution to instances where noncompliant businesses are impacting their quality of life. And offer neighbors a long-term relief from persistently noncompliant businesses. Does it meet those objectives? Is it qualified mostly? Yes. I pointed out, and I will continue to point out, by other means, some of the additions that I believe belong there, but the effectiveness of protections for neighborhood, property owners, and residents will greatly depend on the resources the city commits to enforcing the proposed regulation. But I do believe the ordinance represents a viable framework. Plano's decision-makers recognized in April 2019 that identifying where short-term rental businesses were being operated and enforcing regulatory compliance would require a significant investment of city resources, and instead opted to enter into a voluntary tax collection agreements with two of the largest hosting platforms. Five years later, the investment of city resource required unfortunately has grown with a number of listings. The only thing that has changed is the regulatory documents serving as the starting point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now take a recess and start our regular meeting. We will return to the speakers as soon as we get past the opening, and you'll be able to continue with the speakers. I now declare the Plano City Council has reconvened into open session. All members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Reverend Reagan Gililand, pastor of Outreach and Engagement with Christ United Methodist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance in Texas pledge led by the Boys and Girls Clubs of Collin County, Plano. Would you please rise?
Would you pray with me? God of hope, love, and justice, I thank you for those here that have answered a call to serve this community of Plano, Texas. This is no easy task, and the decisions undoubtedly weigh heavy upon those here. The doubts that may creep in, the rush to make decisions at times, and the endless what-ifs can sometimes leave leaders paralyzed. We pray that when the moment calls for our breath, they would take it, as they discern what is best for our neighbors among us. We pray as citizens of Plano that we would feel bold enough to voice our opinions and passions with a level of grace and respect. We pray that our leaders would hear us out, ask questions, and do their best for the interest of all people, regardless of who they are or where they come from. We pray for clarity in the chaos of life, and we pray that all of us, as citizens of Plano, can encourage and support in all the ways we can join in efforts across neighborhoods or party lines or any imaginary lines sometimes we set up to make this the most welcoming place for all people. We thank you for your guidance and your voice that leads us. May we all listen and follow. Amen.
You guys come up just a little bit, and I want you to speak really loud, okay?
Yes, sir.
Lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You guys ready?
And face the flag.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Be seated. Guys, I have red and blue. Oh, white? Yeah, that's right. You guys, here, which one do you want? I see, yeah, I was, yeah, and then I was, I was over at the Boys and Girls Club the other day. Now, see, I've moved to these. Did you guys all get one? Let's all, come here.
Oh, I said you.
Come here. Everybody stand here. This guy's taller than me. Well, that's not, that's gonna change real quick. Okay, you guys ready? Wait, watch, look at the camera. What are we doing? Okay, well, hold on. We're using like a real camera now. Guys, thank you guys for doing that. I appreciate it. Okay, we have several recognitions tonight, and the first one I'd like to present is 15 teen volunteers are receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award. So I'd like to call forward Karina Sadler, Volunteer Resources Supervisor, and all the teen volunteers. You know who you are. Come on down.
Thank you so much. I'm joined by Morgan Green Griffin. We are at Volunteers in Plano. We have 15 incredible teen volunteers tonight receiving their President's Volunteer Service Award, which means they've given over 100 hours of service in 2023 just to City of Plano facilities, programs, and services. Okay, so when I call your name, if you'll grab your certificate from Morgan, Isha Banerji, Sanvi Bolani, Charlotte Chen, Zain Hussain, Emily Jacob, Meher Jamala Martikar, Avi Natiel, Aditi Purri, Ria Rathud, Risha Rathud, Aditi Shankar, Uvia Shanbaharaman, Anushree Sriniwassan, Srihari Vijay Bhaskar, and Fei Shu. Yes. Want to open your certificates? Shake hands?
There you go. Yeah, perfect. Come on. You all come on up here.
Right there in the middle. Don't be shy.
Come a little closer.
There we go.
You two are, you three are so shy. You come right to the front. I know, I know, I know you're in, oh, I know what's going on here. There you go. Okay. Are we close? Okay. All right. Got to come in a little bit. Right here? Do you want to, you want to go back one row? This one here, the shy one that really needs to come right up to the front? Yeah, no, that's too bad. That's what's gonna happen. You're gonna go right here. There we go. All right. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next, our next item is April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I'd like to call forward Sarah Akers, founder of the Plano Children's Theater, North Texas Performing Arts, Dan Powers, Children's Advocacy Center of Collin County, Tricia Clifton and Patrick Wilbur, CASA, court-appointed special advocates of Collin County, Sue Reeves, Foster Friends, Denise Kendrick, Embrace, Deanna Kikekendall and Curtis Howard, Child Protective Services Board, and Direction 613. Y'all come on down. So all of you are here because you do so much for this community in protecting our children, and so because April, we're almost in April, we're close enough, we'll go ahead and get it going. April is the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I'd like to read a proclamation. I won't read it all. Whereas the month of April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to acknowledge the importance of families and communities working to prevent child abuse and neglect that occur when people find themselves in stressful situations without friends, family, or resources. Whereas child abuse prevention and everyone's responsibility, all Texans must work together to strengthen our communities, build localized support networks that are accessible, and contribute to the well-being of the entire community. So now, therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, do hereby proclaim April 2024 is National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Plano, and I do thereby encourage all citizens to join me and the Plano City Council, supporting all organizations and individuals who work tirelessly to eradicate child abuse in Plano, so that all of our children and families enjoy a high quality of life in the city of excellence. Thank you all so very much. We'll have to just cut it and split it. Y'all come on up. See what I'm capable of. If you keep staying off there. Yeah, we need, we need some over here. The boat is, the boat is leaning. Thank you guys so much. Thank you so much. Okay. Our next proclamation, April 1st through 5th, 2024, is National Community Development Week, and April marks the 50th anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant. So I'd like to call forward, Curtis, you're busy today, Curtis Howard, Director of Neighborhood Services, Shanette Eden, Housing of Community Services Manager, Alda Floyd and Karima Hernandez, Housing and Community Service Coordinators, Sandra Ottinger, Community Grants Administrator, representatives from Texas Muslim Women's Foundation, the Samaritan Inn, The Family Place, and City House. So let me read the proclamation. So National Community Development Week, April 1st through 5th, whereas since it began in '74, the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided local governments with resources for a wide range of unique needs. And whereas CDBG, one of the longest continuously-run programs of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, provides valuable assistance for local community and economic development initiatives. And whereas the month of April marks the 50th anniversary of CDBG, and whereas National Community Development Week is designed to draw attention to the accomplishments of the Community Development Program. Whereas the lives of over 20,000 Plano residents have been positively affected by 35 years of these funds. Now, therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, do hereby proclaim April 1st through 5th, 2024, is National Community Development Week in Plano, and I do thereby encourage all citizens to join me and the Plano City Council in providing help to communities throughout the area. Congratulations, and thank you all so much. All right, let's take a picture. You guys come over here. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Greg. Thank you, guys. All right. This is an exciting time for me. I don't know about you guys, but I'm pretty pumped about this. I've been watching you guys all year long. And I went to Fort Worth, and you guys just dominated in Fort Worth. I didn't go to San Antonio, but I watched it on whatever that station was. You guys are absolutely amazing. I've been here. So I've been here long before Plano East was, was built. I hate to brag about that, but it's, it's all I got. There have been some incredible athletes that have come through Plano East, went on to college, went on to the pros. You guys are the only ones that have a state championship in your hand, and that is great. So guys, come on down. I want you to come on down. I want the coaches, trainers, the managers to come down, please. I do want our superintendent, Dr. Teresa Williams, to come down, and Dr. Selita Freeman. I, the board members, Jerry, Nancy, Kathleen, please come on down. See, look at this. You can't see me anymore, can you? That's impressive. I love this. This is, look, look, I gotta go to the front. Congratulations so much. All right. Ladies, you can come up front with me because we'll be seen, we'll be seen. So let me, let me read this proclamation. And, and I have a copy for all of you guys of, of this. This goes to, to Coach Wester because he deserves it. So whereas in 2024, the Plano East Senior High School Panther Boys Basketball Team won the Class 6A Texas State Title after a 40-game undefeated season. This is the first state basketball championship in school history. And whereas this accomplishment is a result of the hard work and dedication of the athletes, coaches, trainers, and other staff on the Plano East Senior High School Panthers team. And whereas the athletes, coaches, trainers, and other staff on Pesh School Panthers team are Matt Wester, the coach, Michael Godwin, assistant coach, Chad Evans, assistant coach, Greg Thomas, assistant coach, Jamie Smith, assistant coach, Tiffany Fan, trainer, Shirley Abrego, trainer, El Madawi, trainer, Kinsley Slaughter, Kaylee Hatcher, manager, Gabby Klinger, manager, KJ Campbell, DJ Hall. Remember that name, you'll hear it again. Grishard Angton, player. Narit, oh, Narit, go ahead, tell me. Yeah, that's it. That's it. I don't think the announcers ever got it right. Yeah. Isaiah Bruington, Jordan Mizell, Ethan Moss, Xavier Miller, Carter Buchanan, John Tran, Mustafa Abulnied, Seth Romero, Izan Quazi, Amani Kustakis, and Shima Shiniki. Sorry. Now therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, do hereby proclaim Monday, March 25th, 2024, is Plano East Senior High School Panthers Boys Basketball Team Day. And I do by encourage all citizens to join me and the Plano City Council in congratulating them on this momentous achievement. All right, congratulations, guys. Let's take a picture. Now do we, we have, we, oh, there she is. Okay. Yeah, so I, I have a basketball for all of you to sign, plenty of Sharpies. We're gonna put it in a case and display it here at City Hall forever. So. So anyway, I'm really proud of you guys. You, you're, you're, you know, you're the heroes of Plano, and we appreciate all the work you put into it. We especially appreciate the fact that this was a team, that you guys were together for many, many years before now. And that's, that's really what's so special about you guys is, is playing together all these years, and it paid off big time. So congratulations. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. And don't forget to sign the basketball.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, all the City Council members want to be a part of the photo.
Well, let's go. Let's go, City Council, real quick.
If we go up there, we won't be seen, so. Can they come over here?
This is your chance.
No?
Okay, let's go, let's go right back here. No, go, go in the circle. Plano City Council is reconvened. And so we'll go back to where we were on the preliminary open meeting. So let's, let's go back to our speakers, if you don't mind.
Okay, the first one in this go-round is Stacy Matthews, followed by Antonio Miguel Molino Bende.
Hello, everyone. Stacy Matthews, resident here since 1981. Very hard to believe.
Stacy, I'm, thank you for, for your patience and everyone else here about to speak. So I apologize, but thank you for your patience.
Of course. Thank you. Appreciate the time today. We did just want to touch base on a few points in terms of the regulations. We, in fact, I, in fact, am certainly happy to register as a responsible Airbnb super host. We did just have a couple of questions in general from Section 731 Booking Service. What is the difference between this and a hosting platform? This term is not used anywhere in the code except in the definition of a hosting platform. Noise Monitoring Device. These examples of these devices, we believe, should be provided as not only do they need to comply with privacy laws, but they also need to comply with hosting platform rules. Occupant. This term is very broadly defined and can include owner and its guests. Close attention should be given to how this term is used throughout the code. And short-term rental, for purposes, the term vacation rental should be, please, clearly defined. One of the things we also wanted to speak about was the criminal conduct definition is extremely vague. It covers inclusion, a violation of any ordinance. This would mean that a violation of a very minor violation, like accidentally putting trash bins in the wrong place or confusion about bringing the trash bin back from the curb, if you are, as late, would be considered a criminal offense. It seems unreasonable and fair that simply because we are running a short-term rental, we would be held to a substantially different standard than every other resident of Plano. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Plano City Council. My name is Antonio. The address is 1207 Drexel Drive. I oppose the proposed regulation as it currently stands. I'm gonna keep it short. So I want to delve into the financial realities. Operating short-term rentals in Plano poses challenges. The subscription-based model of service providers alongside escalating energy costs and the ever-expanding spectrum of taxes and fees places notable strain on hosts. Furthermore, when comparing Plano's proposed registration fees, which is Section 6-738, application fees, to those larger cities of, like New York, which charges $145, San Antonio charges $100 for a three-year permit, and Los Angeles, which charges $89. The contrast is glaring. It feels like an unnecessary obstacle for us hosts. Consider the economic ramification. Plano hosts already contribute significantly through various taxes and fees. Imposing hefty registrations and renewal costs will only compound our financial burden. We must strive for equilibrium, ensuring adherence to regulations without stifling growth. Exploring alternative fee structures that support our local economy and vibrant communities of short-term rental hosts in Plano is essential. Lowering registration fees to a third of the, of their current amount and implementing reduced renewal fees is crucial. This adjustment should not overburden the city, especially considering the property taxes, hotel taxes, and occupancy taxes we already pay. Short-term rent, short-term renting our homes is a fundamental right, not a privilege. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
The next speaker is Jennifer Asher, followed by Gina Moray.
Hello. It is very clear that many residents are legitimately upset about the existence of short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. But the result is an extremely sensitive and possible, possible overreaction or bias towards blaming to a short-term rental property. Loud noise, for example, may come from any one of several neighbors or even a group walking down the sidewalk. And, and a resident who is already unhappy about a perfectly well-run short-term rental on the street may make an assumption and call in a complaint without even investigating where the noise is coming from. Short-term rental owners should have a clear and simple path to preserve our own rights as citizens and property owners in Plano to defend ourselves and not be penalized unfairly. I'm sorry, I started this wrong. This is about Section 6-746 and 747 regarding hearing and appeal process for offenses. And I feel that there should be a more timely and simple process for, for short-term rental owners to be able to appeal or go to if there is a, a problem or an offense. Further, I believe, as mentioned earlier, canceling existing reservations for a prolonged period could be devastating financially for a short-term rental owner, particularly for a nuisance incident, which should be, more accurately, reflect a nuisance offense as the definition of a dictionary definition of a nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gina Moray. I live at 4825 Bull Run Drive. I've lived in Plano the majority of my life, been at this address for 20 years, and have been an onsite short-term rental host, Airbnb super host, for a little over two years. I do have some concerns with the STR Task Force report, as well as any complaint and/or emergency phone calls made to law enforcement. As it relates to calls, to calls made to Plano PD, I do feel that calls we, the owners, short-term rental hosts, make versus a neighbor or someone else making a call is being very different and should be treated as such. For instance, if one of my guests proceeds to attempt to throw party at my property or participates in illegal activity, then this call I make to Plano PD should not count the same as if one of my neighbors or someone else makes a call due to my negligence of my short-term rental go, guests. The other item I'd like to bring up is Section 6-742, Noise and Outdoor Electronic Monitoring. What's the purpose of requiring noise monitor, monitoring, sorry? Indoor noise monitoring should not be relevant to the city or other residents. If there's a loud baby crying or a couple having a massive argument, but it's not audible to outdoors, then there's really, it serves no purpose. I do feel, however, this might be an item that you could present during the training session as an option to short-term rental hosts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jason Kurgosian, followed by James Gilbert.
Council, thank you for taking the time. I never wear these, so you're all a blur. I apologize. Jason Kurgosian, 3233 Royal Melbourne. Been a resident in Plano for 10 years. Also a short-term rental owner. I want to talk more generally about what you're seeing here, but also, as meetings progress, I'd like this to be a focus of the group, and that is balance. We, we want to make sure that this is all balanced, not just for the community, for the people that don't want short-term. We don't want it on the side of mayhem. We don't want it on the side of, of rules that are passed that are possibly legally questionable. We want balance. With that, this is actually turning out to be a ban on short-term rentals. It is true that we are grandfathered in, but everyone knows there's attrition in short-term rentals, and once those go, there can be no more. So if you create an environment where you can have complaints against good-standing hosts, that creates that creates an environment of agitation, where we could be a target of people that say they do not want us in their neighborhoods, even though we have a right to be there. So I'd recommend that you look at protecting the short-term rental owners, those of us that actually want to be compliant, that actually do want these regulations, but we need to have it fair and balanced. This is not a tyranny of the majority, and we hope that through this process, we show we are responsible and we are respectful, but we do need to be heard. Thank you.
My name is James Gilbert. I live on Roying Ridge Drive in Plano, Texas. I've been in Plano now for about 40 years. I unfortunately am a person that lives with a VBR, short-term rental, behind my home. I've encountered so much noise, created so much of an issue, from trash to noise, to just totally disrespect for me as a homeowner. I have personally called the police myself twice. My neighbors, I have four of the neighbors that have also filed different complaints, not even the same day I filed. So I've not had a really good experience at this point in time. I've had encounters with the people that manage it on five different occasions, where I personally spoke to the manager on three different occasions, trying to solve the problem. I want to have a good relationship, but I don't like what I am being faced with. I have no control over what's taking place. I heard what was presented tonight. I don't know if it's really going to solve the problem. I wish it would go away, because I don't, there's no history yet as to what the impact financially is going to be for the homeowner that lives next door to a short-term rental, to see what the cost is going to be negatively for us on this side. So we're about to, I'm going to say 10 more seconds. We've got spring coming up. School's going to be out. Instead of having weekend visitors, I have daily visitors behind my house. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Efren Giradot, and Efren will be followed by Zoe Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. This is my first time here. I have to cross out what I hear, because I don't want to repeat. About two years ago, my neighbor across the street sold his home. He got paid cash. And I also have a note in my door, they want to buy my home, he paid cash. I don't know how many times the Plano Police Department has been in that home. There was a very serious issue, January 6th, and I don't want to go in details. The owner of this STR company, STR home, is a company who came from Canada. They own several STR in the Metroplex, and they're paying cash. These big companies, they don't care about communities or residential neighborhoods. Airbnb is a big corporation that just wants to make money. Airbnb Customs Service told me over the phone that they don't allow parties or events. However, parties or events still happen.
20 seconds.
I don't know who, what's going to happen with the banks leave. It's very important to know who your neighbor is. That's very important. I ask please to very strong, apply very strong rules, enforce Airbnb rules, they're not parties and events. If you're not complying, please shut down the business. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Zoe, and I'm at 2037 Cairns Drive, and I am begrudgingly supporting a really strong ordinance against STRs. Over a year ago, I stood before you recounting the haring experience of a bullet piercing through the sanctity of my home, shattering the peace and terrifying my innocent three-year-old child. I attempted to convey the sheer horror of having to explain such an incident to a young child and the painful necessity of teaching her to protect herself from the potential harm. I pleaded with you to empathize, to imagine yourselves in my shoes, to understand the urgency of enacting stringent regulations on short-term rentals. The ordinance governing short-term rentals must be robust, unwavering, and unequivocal, least strict. It must serve as a barrier against the encroachment of violence and chaos into our neighborhoods. I implore you to heed our voices, to honor the responsibility, and trust us upon you to protect the well-being of our citizens. Let us be the architects of a future where every child can sleep soundly without fear, where every parent can find solace in the knowledge that their home is truly their sanctuary. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lynn McClemon, and she, or Lynn will be followed by Justin Elliott, who will join us on Zoom.
Good evening. I'm Lynn McClemon, and I live at 4021 Elm Hill Drive for the past 28 years. Yes, I support registration with enforcement. I have a short-term rental three doors down from me. I'm going to quickly touch on four of the problems that my neighborhood has had with this short-term rental. Number one, property maintenance. The short-term rental owner does not seem to understand that she is responsible to maintain the property. The STR in my neighborhood is one of the worst-looking properties in the neighborhood. Two, excessive trash. I've contacted Plano Neighborhood Services numerous times due to excessive trash left on the STR driveway, including a Walmart shopping cart. So for weeks, it looked like I was living in the slums rather than in the city of excellence. Number three, excessive noise. One of the reasons why people rent STRs is so they can bring their big dogs with them, because hotels won't allow it. When short-term renters leave for the day, they leave their dogs outside all day, and the dogs bark nonstop because they're in an unfamiliar area. My once quiet and peaceful neighborhood is now like a dog kennel. Number four, parking. The STR has an attached garage located in the back of the house, and the STR owner does not provide a keypad for them to use the garage. I got to wrap up, I know. I hope that requiring garage access would be a mandatory requirement of an STR. I hope that the registration process will address all four of these concerns with enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Elliott will be joining us on Zoom. Mr. Elliott, will you please turn on your camera? There you go. Go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. While I'm not against the registration in general, I am against this registration process because of a couple items, those being that it doesn't seem to consider the overall input from the STR owner communities, what occurs to their business when the registration is revoked, and as well, it doesn't have enough protections in there for being grandfathered in and definitions around them. So after reviewing the full registration, my takeaway was that the SPR owners were not surveyed or interviewed. That's my impression, to fully understand what the SPR process is and the finer details. The, so what occurs to, what occurs when you lose your registration and then you have to cancel your future booking? Well, on VRBO, if you have to cancel future booking, it can cost you, the fees can be up to 50% of the total booking. So if I have somebody staying there for three weeks, and it's a $3,000 or $2,000, whatever it is, I pay 50% of that fee. So as well, if I have multiple properties across multiple cities, and I have, and my profile is impacted by this, it will reduce my search ranking across all my properties. So there's some severe impacts there. The other, the last item for being grandfathered in, what happens if there's another COVID or another Texas freeze that impacts my properties where I can't rent, I can't afford to do the registration for that year or whatever? Am I allowed to come back in as a grandfathered-in property? There's not enough explanation about the protections there, but what happens when you're revoked? Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
The next speaker is Matt Bingham, followed by Annie Hill.
Good evening, City Council. As a resident of Plano, you all can have guests in your home. You can have business in your home. If you want people to pay you to stay in your home, people have a problem with that. I don't understand this. As we learned from the city staff in the last PNZ meeting, not one single call of service, or service, was made in regards to a partial home STRT. By those stats, the biggest problem in the city are non-SRT homes, who have countless more calls of service. So putting this burden, additionally putting this burden on registration and additional taxes and requirements that cost lots of money to the people with one or two rooms in their home that we can't afford to do that. It would put us out of business. It would put some of us on the streets, or we'd have to start renting out the whole home, which nobody wants either. Thank you for your time.
It'd be a lot easier.
I'll try to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Muns and council members. Thank you for your work on this issue. My name is Anna Hill. I was proud to serve on the city's Short-Term Rental Task Force. I've been a homeowner in Plano for over 20 years, and I'm an attorney licensed to practice in the state of Texas. Given your request for brevity and to stay on topic here, I'm going to postpone my prepared comments on property law and zoning for another time. I am for the registration that is being proposed here tonight. It was one of the three key findings of the task force that I was a part of. As you can see in Mr. Howard's presentation, the ordinance seeks to address a number of issues. It's complicated because short-term rentals raise a number of issues. What you cannot see, but I can attest to as a member of the task force, is that the guidance given by the task force reflected lengthy and thoughtful discussions that did seek balance on both sides for the underlying issues. Trying to stay in your timeframe here, I do believe that this is also a critically important tool for people who will be required to live near short-term rentals that are problems. I live near two. One practical comment that I'm compelled to make in response to one of the earlier comments is that short-term rentals present a 24/7 problem in our residential neighborhoods. So residents need to be given tools, like the representative who's able to respond within an hour, to address issues that happen outside normal business hours, which coincidentally is when all of the problems happen on our street. Thank you for your continued work on this very important matter.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Daniela Lederer, followed by Edward Lederer.
Good evening. My name is Daniela, and I live in 1608 Azure Trail. My points are in the Section 6735, referring to the complete registration application. The point number four in that section talks about the floor plan. Some of these floor plans relate with the safety equipment are clear enough, or others need a little bit more clarification, like for example, floor plan for a sleeping area. How can we determine the number of occupants per mid? For example, we can use a square foot of the room, or how many people can sleep in that room. We need a clarification to avoid any of being denied during our registration. Future layout plan is the other point in that specific point four. This plan really makes no sense, especially when furniture is moving. The original plan may be no longer be accurate, and a new plan will be need to be submit with, in less than three days, to the director, okay? My question is, what is the purpose, and what specific public, healthy, and safety concern is this looking to address? Also, how could rearrangement furniture in the personal residence be considered a criminal offense? That you can see in Section C74A, in the offense sub number 12. The next point is the photographers on interior and exterior of the property. We provide the listing number of the property and in the platform when we go to the registration. Over there, you can see all of the pictures you may want to see. Otherwise, you will need to store these in a file and maintain all pictures updated. We update pictures constantly. That puts us again in a position that maybe, if not for in the 72 hours, we go to be...
20 seconds.
Something. We were, we go bad. The other two is listing in the hosting platform. If we're doing away with the seasonal rentals, why we need to update a possible list in 72 hours. And the last, the host rule. Numbers of occupants restriction, prohibition, and parties and all the relevant information is always available for the city to review. In the platform and change will be in real time. If you check that, you know exactly what we are offered to the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Eddie Lederer, 1608 Azure Trail, 40-year resident of Plano. You know, I'm all for effective, well-thought-out, equitable registration that's simple and fair, but I need clarification. One point in particular, just the mechanics of it. 735 says no STR may be operated without an approved valid STR registration. H, a registration is non-transferable and should not be assigned, not transferred to a new owner. 737A says a registration is valid for one calendar year unless there is a change in ownership. 745, suspension of one year operation of an STR without a valid registration. If the director determines STR was operated without a valid registration, then the application of registration may be denied for one year. So the mechanics of this. I'm grandfathered. I sell my house on July 1st. Registration is non-transferable. Registration is no longer valid upon the sale. New owners apply for the new registration on July 2nd. Guests are in my house till July 18th, because they've been there for a 21-day booking. 725 2A and D is a huge registration process. Without, what about existing reservations going to the new owners? If I'm selling my home and I'm selling that opportunity to them at the same time? Are new owners in violation of operating without a valid and approved registration? How will this work not to penalize new owners and arriving and booking guests? We need a grace period process that's fair and equitable. Thank you.
The next speaker is Clara Damti, followed by Kristen Reiniger, and Corey Reiniger will be the last speaker.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Clara Damti, and I have been a Plano resident for the past 15 years. I am opposed to this audience as currently written. I want to refer to Section 6-745, denial and suspension of STR registration. Generally, the task force recommended escalating penalties for repeat violations. We feel that the penalties in these sections are disproportionate and excessive. Penalties should start with a warning or notice, advance to a fine for a second occurrence, and only after that, progress to a suspension of registration. This section belies a lack of understanding of how hosting and hosting platforms operate. Even a short suspension in registration of registrations would result in canceled booking and immediate loss of income, loss of status carefully built over a period of years, and impairment of the ability to earn future income. For hosts to rely on such income for the livelihood, this may result in severe financial hardship. Revoking our rights due to one incident for three months or six months is a bit extreme. Regarding serious incidents, what evidence would be necessary to prove that the owner was aware but disregarded the risk? What are the actions you are expecting the STR owner to take here as a preventive step? Lastly, we need clarification about Section I, action during suspension. Does an unconforming STR with a suspended registration risk losing unconforming status during the suspension period? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Kristen Reiniger. I'm a 15-year resident, 12-year homeowner, and seven-year super host. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts this evening. I am opposed to this registration as written. As noted in the Phase 2 report, the task force agreed that there are important differences between listings with onsite management, such as ours, and those without. Additionally, throughout the task force process, no evidence was presented that indicates there are any issues with these types of listings, in terms of nuisances, serious incidents, or negative effects on neighbors. On the contrary, with the primary resident residing onsite, these homes contribute strongly to community fabric. Unfortunately, this important and real distinction is barely evident in the proposed registration requirements. The requirements of registration should be aligned to the risk of the use. Specifically, additional insurance requirements may not be affordable, attainable, or appropriate for this type of rental. The level of documentation required is burdensome, invasive, and gratuitous, while not advancing any clear public interest. The fees should likewise be aligned with a simpler streamlined level of review. And to paraphrase Chair David Downs from last week's meeting, the process for a one-bedroom rental should be a simple one-pager. I sincerely hope you will take these concerns into consideration as you work through this important issue. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Corey Reiniger. As a resident of the Bulky Waste Pilot Project area, I for one welcome the return of regular monthly collection. I oppose this registration ordinance as currently written. It is heavy on punishment, classifying any infraction of city, state, or federal rules as criminal conduct. Be sure to read that definition. It goes beyond the recommendations of the task force in some instances and ignores their recommendations in others. I'm dismayed that there has not been more robust outreach to all stakeholders, specifically the STR host community. This community is small, some 400 or so individuals, and the broadcast outreach efforts conducted today have largely failed to connect with many. The Arlington model is the touchstone of this entire process. And I've looked to, and has looked to... I crossed out too much. Prior to enacting regulations, Arlington leaders directed staff to conduct meetings with both homeowner groups and the local STR alliance to review the final draft ordinance and solicit feedback. Those meetings yielded areas of both consensus and disagreement, but ultimately lay the foundation for their successful regulations. This sort of stakeholder input that affords both parties equal weight has been largely absent in Plano over the last year. The task force report is a product of a majority rules democratic process. This, however, falls short of the equitable balancing of minority interests that we expect in our representative system. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the end of the speakers. And I know many of you asked questions regarding Curtis' presentation. As far as direction goes, we need to give staff a direction as whether or not this particular registration overview is in the direction that we feel comfortable with. And so I'd like to make this as brief as possible, because the decision will be, you know, in a month, month and a half from now. So anyway, if you don't mind, Councilmember Rick Adeli, if you'll just kind of give your thoughts on it, so that we can kind of give some direction.
Certainly, absolutely. So I think we're on the right track with this registration ordinance. As I mentioned during my questions for Director Howard, I think we could tighten up 6-742 to make it clear that we're requiring cameras and that the electronic monitoring is not audio-only, because I do think cameras will deter some of the illegal behavior in front yards that we've heard about from residents. Then also, 6-745, I do think that for really serious incidents like gunfire, prostitution, you know, perhaps drug dealing, things of that nature, you know, obviously, as Director Howard said, there are going to be other penal code issues involving that. But if the penal code issues come down on the guest, but the owner was not vigilant enough in preventing that type of behavior, I do think there should be a longer-than-a-year suspension for these really serious incidents. I also think that, you know, some interesting points were made tonight. An STR owner asked to not count calls made by the STR owner against the STR owner. There could be a place for that, because I would hate to pass a registration ordinance that would cause the onsite property manager to feel like they can't call the police to, you know, get control of an unruly situation. That would actually work contrary to what we're trying to achieve in pacifying neighborhoods. And so, you know, that being said, if somebody else also calls, maybe it would still count. I don't know. I think we want to encourage people to call the police when they notice a problem. I also think in terms of, you know, at least the one-year suspensions, I would be okay having an appeal to council. I have full faith in the city manager, but similar to what we've done in other areas, like with the COVID emergency powers and things of that nature, or even ratifications of emergency expenditures, we've had a route for things to come before the council. And, you know, I think that's ultimately, that's who the people get to represent, get to elect. And so I'd be okay with an appeal to the council. And in general, I think we're on the right track. I want to make sure that, you know, that we have a way to really enforce this and, you know, devote resources to the enforcement of this, because we've got to root out bad actors to have strong neighborhoods. So thank you.
Councilmember Horn. Thank you. This ordinance where we got to took a lot of collaboration from those that were strictly opposed to STRs and residential property versus what we can do as determined by the Fifth Circuit. The STR owners here are represented. I have to apologize that they did not reach out to enough of you to join the 16 members, but we hear your voices. Please understand this ordinance is, we're at the beginning of this process. That's why we have this open forum here, and we hear you all, okay? And we thank you all for participating. We really do. I do have some questions, whether or not we had determined enough, have enough detail in the onsite ownership of STRs versus the offsite, and that'd be those that have, who don't live on the property, that are not there. I do have an issue with respond. I think we need to be a little bit more clear and concise. Will a phone call be sufficient within an hour? I don't know of that answer. I was hoping to have someone at the property site within an hour, but that's just me. Okay? And I think we also need to look at the fee structure that we're looking here, as some of the owners have represented, that the fee structure represented in the ordinance could be a little onerous on them. And then the transfer of the property. If that property were sold, and you made commitments a month out, I've already booked my STRs for August, so I'm committed to going to Colorado then. So I understand your pain if that property was sold in the meantime. So I think those are some particular issues that we need to address at this point. Mayor Protom.
Yeah, a few points that I'll bring up. One is, I thought it was a good point about someone saying they need to know who will be contacting them if there's an issue. People don't answer their phones today if they don't know who's calling them. So I think that's important, that we, in training or in the application, there's a designated number or numbers that these owners know to put in their phone, and this is who they're expecting a number for. I also do wonder if the one-hour contact is correct, or if maybe they're allowed to designate a backup number if they're not available, if they're on vacation, something to that effect. There's reason somebody might not be able to respond in an hour. I also had written down what Councilmember Rick Adeli said about the city manager having final authority. Maybe there being an opportunity for an appeal in another way to consider that. And then also, just an opportunity, if, in my mind, we really want to incentivize people to operate well. You know, we've been talking a lot about penalizing people who aren't. And so I'd love for there to be something in this where we incentivize STRs who are playing by the rules, doing really well for a period of time, to possibly get, whatever that time period, if it's three years, four years, whatever, to get a potential discount on their renewal fees, to incentivize people for their good behavior. And that's all I'd say.
Deputy Mayor.
So I support everything that has been proposed so far. I also had issue about the one-hour window, as well as not knowing who's going to be contacting you, because I never answered the phone anyway. So, you know, there may be potentially some way to make contacts with text messages or some sort of written notification. I think that would probably be a good idea. I had an issue with the definitions, I mean, all the criminal or offense definitions. I think that needs to be linked to, if we're going to make, you know, these offenses criminal, then we need to link it to the Texas Penal Code. I just think that that's important, because otherwise, we're going to be playing this, well, you know, is this too vague, or is this really what it means? I mean, what is child abuse? What is, you know, sexual misconduct? And I don't want to be, I don't think we should be playing those type of games at all. Other than that, I think that, you know, every time when we put some sort of ordinance in place, we are going to run into problems. So I like to see, once it's out, once we pass what we're going to be enforcing, to come back and revisit and re-tweak. So kind of like our bulk, you know, the, what is that?
Bulky Waste.
Yeah, the Bulky Waste thing. You know, come back and reevaluate whether or not this is, you know, it's doing what we intended to do, rather than just penalizing people. We are actually, you know, encouraging people to rent responsibly and to, you know, to make it a neighborhood. So I like to see more, possibly like every six months or every 12 months, to come back and have the staff tell us whether or not the reevaluation, how this is going. And then the final, on the appeal, I would rather, instead of going to a city council, I would like to see perhaps like, you know, kind of like when the mayor, you appoint us to different part of, you know, the task force. I mean, you know, have a couple people who will be in charge of the appeal, and work with the city manager in coming up with a solution. That's it.
Councilmember Williams.
First, I want to recognize the tremendous amount of effort that has brought us to where we are, both by the STR task force and city staff in helping craft this and negotiating over a very long period of time, and for folks speaking to the council since long before the STR task force was formed. That said, several good points have been brought up already. I won't belabor those or repeat them. I agree, there's some language that could be tightened up. I'll say that when it comes to the term criminal conduct, the definition of criminal conduct, I believe it's worth differentiating, similar to how we've done in how we've defined nuisance incidents. There's a big difference between noise complaints and leaving your trash bin out a day longer than you were supposed to. So I think recognizing that difference for criminal conduct is worth it.
Thank you. Councilmember Horn.
I also agree with a lot of the comments that were already made. Maria, I don't know if an existing board could maybe Board of Adjustment, or somebody that, so we're not creating a new, but I agree with your comment. I want to acknowledge just that, really appreciate the people that came out with constructive feedback. Heard from a lot of hosts, especially onsite, who genuinely, I can tell, want to play by the rules, want to make sure they understand the rules, want clarification, and that's reassuring to me that, and also from those who really don't want STRs, but will begrudgingly support if we can, you know, do it to the best of our abilities. So really appreciate all the compromise there and all the requests for the clarification, which we will work on. Agree that we need video cameras onsite. I did not agree with only having video cameras onsite if there's not an onsite host, because I think then it could get very, you know, when is the host in town or out of town? And I don't know. I think maybe even if it's a Ring camera or something to kind of control who's coming and going, I'd be open to feedback on that. But that was one comment that made me a little uncomfortable. It seemed like a loophole that could easily be taken advantage of. Not that I'm saying anyone in this room would do that, but someone might. So I just appreciate everyone's participation and input, and hope we're getting to where we need to be.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have three things. The first, and this may be, we want to put it on next meeting for consideration, I really want this to work. We've got a lot of time and effort. Our citizens have got a lot of time and effort in it. And I think however we can do it to make it the smoothest implementation registration. So I would propose that we extend our current moratorium on new STRs for at least another year while we implement the registration, to give it time to get in place and work the bugs out. That's number one. The other two things are based on things I heard from the residents tonight, and I think Councilmember Rick Adeli had already touched on it, but I think the, having an exemption for onsite management who initiated an 911 call, could you have a ruly, unruly, let's say, guest, should not, you know, count, you know, against that property. So I think that was a good point. And then kind of a, I guess, maybe a carrot, you know, on this, to incentivize, there was a comment made about what happens if, you know, we sell our property and we already have reservations, and maybe that's why one person wants to buy it, because they see the revenue stream. I would say that we probably would want to look at having some type of a transfer grace period contingent on, in order to qualify for that grace period, whatever that might be, that it would only apply to a property that had had no other violations or complaints within a 12-month period. And other than that, that's it. And again, I want to reiterate, I really appreciate the work that the STR task force have done. Corey, I know you, you know, you were involved in that, as well as some other folks here. A lot of time and effort went into it, and it worked out, I think, much better than we probably imagined. And staff as well, all the work that they put into it at times. So we're going to make this work. We're going to be, I guess, voting on it, the final, it's not his version, next month. So all these comments have been very helpful for me, and I think to the rest of staff too. And I think when we get this together, it's going to be, may not be perfect, nothing ever is, but we're certainly going to be putting something in place that will be based on citizen input that we've had and hard data that we didn't have, you know, a year, year and a half, two years ago. So I want to thank you everybody for the input they put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Thank you, all of you who spoke. Curtis, I hope you got some of that down, or all of it. Yeah. That's impressive. But we'd like you to spend the next few days going through that. I'd like legal to go through what is, you know, legally advisable and what isn't. And then get back with council and talk about opportunities of pivoting and adjustment that may be included in the ordinance. Do you have enough direction for you guys to kind of muddy through that?
Council, you gave a lot of direction.
Yeah.
So there's a lot to this. So I counted at least 11 issues for us to take up and look at. So the, and some of these are very substantial and may have consequences elsewhere within this. So we are going to need to do a legal review. We will need to do some practical enforcement discussion to look at these. Let me say that an appeal to somebody other than the city manager is woily supported by me. Clears up my calendar. I have no problem with that whatsoever, so wholly supported. So I can say that one can be in there for sure. But let us work on this and then circle back. I do think that council, and hearing a couple of items, you're going to have council items for discussion on future agendas. I think Councilman Smith's discussion on an extension is something that, again, I heard from one council member. I think that's something that y'all ought to discuss.
All right. Thank you. Next item is consent in regular agendas. Any item council member would like to remove? And the last one is council items for discussion in future agendas.
Yeah, I think we've already discussed. I'd like to have that discussion added before we finalize on extending our one-year moratorium.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion, a second, to, or, yeah, two people to put that on... So I have a motion in a second to, or, yeah, two people to put that on the, the future agendas.
Correct.
All right. All right. So let's move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda, the consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from the agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. Presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests. Motion to approve.
Second. Casey and Maria. That's a guess. I don't know. No, it's pretty close. Rick, did you beat Maria? Okay, never mind. Sorry, Maria.
I'll look at the video.
All right. So Casey and Rick, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. Presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests were received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one. Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2024-4 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended, to expand specific use permit 660 for household care institution from point three to point six acre of land located on two lots on the north side of 19th Street, 400 feet west of N Avenue in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas. Presently owned general office with specific use 660 for household care institution. Directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm Christina Day, Director of Planning. The case we have before you this evening is a request to expand an existing specific use permit. It is item 660, listed as 660 within the zoning map. It is for a household care institution, which is a facility that provides residence and care to eight or more people regardless of their legal relationship, who are elderly, disabled, orphaned, abandoned, or neglected children, victims of domestic violence convalescing from illness, or rendered temporarily homeless due to fire, natural disaster, or financial setback. So that's the use that we'll be considering this evening. So this is a map showing the location of the property on the north side of 19th Street. You can see the existing SUP to the right and the expansion to the left on the screen. And the aerial photograph is just a little bit, I guess, more zoomed in than the notice area. This is a very close-up view of the property, so you can see how the buildings sit on the property. There, with this request, there is not an intent to change the arrangement of the property. The applicant is requesting to use the existing building. They are operating out of the building on the east side and are looking to do a similar operation on the west side. The existing SUP does have a maximum number of 20 residents, and with this request, they're looking to extend the same standard to the adjacent building, which is a similar, if not exactly the same, building on the adjacent property. So the comprehensive plan does support this change. It is in the downtown corridor future land use designation. It meets the description, priority, and mix of uses. So the feedback we've had to date, we have two of the people within, or the property owners, I should say, within 200 feet that are in support, one that's neutral, and none that oppose. And you see, we've actually had to blow up the other support because it was so tiny, it was almost impossible to see on the map. So you can see how that just very slightly clips the corner of that one property. And then citywide, you see, we had to actually zoom in to the additional property. Picked up one additional comment, which is a comment in opposition when we went citywide, and, but it's just along the same street. So four total responses, again, two in support, one neutral, and one in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this case by a vote of seven to zero, and I'm available for any questions you might have on this case.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'll open the public hearing.
The first speaker is the applicant, Janet Collinsworth.
Good evening, Mayor Buns and council. Thank you very much for taking the time for, to hear this request this evening. I know it's been a long evening, and so I will get right to it. I want to tell you a little bit about who we are that are, that we're actually requesting this extension of our special use permit, specific use permit. We are Agape Resource and Assistance Center. We've been doing operations in Plano for, this is going on our 11th year. Agape Resource and Assistance Center provides housing and critical support services for homeless, single women, single moms, and their children. So we provide, first of all, safe, stable housing to homeless, situationally homeless, single, women-led households. Hope I do this right. Did. All right. So we've been doing this for, going on 11 years, and what we have seen in this time is that the homeless population is increasing. I know you see it too. These are, take, these pictures have been taken very close to our property on 19th Street. In fact, the upper right-hand, upper left-hand corner of the woman sleeping on the street is on 18th Street, directly across from Minis Food Pantry. The gentleman walking in front of the fire station is right at the end of our street, right in front of Fire Station One on Avenue K. The extended stay hotel with the school bus is across 75, and this is what we're seeing. And the gentleman looking in the, in the clothing donation bin is another indication that we really do have a pervasive and growing homeless problem. The impact on our most fragile households, which are women-led households, is what we are trying to combat. We're trying to help these women overcome homelessness and poverty through our pillars of service. So I'll show you a few additional pillars, a few additional pictures that indicate significant problems. In January 14th of 2024, this is right down the street on Avenue K, an individual that was invited to go into our overnight warming station, didn't want to because of fear. That was 14 degrees. So it is a life-threatening problem. The homeless situation is, is a life-threatening problem here. So our mission is to provide housing and transformational support services to homeless women, moms, and their children that empower them to move out of homelessness crisis and poverty and into fulfilling self-sustaining lives. What is happening, what we're seeing is an increase for the need, not just of our services for, but also for affordable housing and homeless, homeless support throughout the, throughout the county. And particularly in, in Plano, I want to kind of focus on a few stats that maybe you have heard or, or have not seen, and that is what's causing this. And what's causing this increase in homelessness, particularly on this vulnerable population, is the increase in rents. And I know this is nothing new to you, but I wanted to show you just a few statistics. In Plano, a rent for a one-to-one and a half, two-bedroom apartment has gone up from December of 2019, 52%. The average rental right now is about $1,700, $1,800. We see that same increase, except actually higher increases in McKinney and in Wiley, up to 63%. This increase has impacted the women and children we serve. Even our graduates are having a difficult time staying housed once they graduate because the accelerating rents is outpassing their ability to stay safely housed, which is one reason why we want to expand our program. So in our, in our 10 years, we have served over 270 women and children in safe, stable housing. Over 75 families with 86 children have graduated with higher income into jobs that will allow them to be self-sustaining, so long as they can keep pace with the increase in rents. That's a 78% graduation success rate, which is quite an accomplishment for our women. We're very proud of those. 90% of the households that we serve are abuse survivors. So if the women are abuse survivors, so are the children. So we offer a two-generational program to help the children overcome the adverse childhood impact as well. So we're not only working on this generation of homeless, but we're also working on future generations of homeless. And the expansion of this specific use permit will allow us to reach additional families. So how do we do this? It's a holistic approach with five pillars of service. We provide housing, but we also find out with each and every woman, why are you not able to be housed yourself? So we ask about, do you have evictions? Do you have a record? Do you not make enough income? Do you have poor credit rating? So under that pillar of housing, we not only house them, but we help them overcome those barriers that prevent them from being housed once they graduate from us. So very often, a single woman-led household has the, has the difficulty of being able to work because she doesn't have childcare. So we help provide that. We actually pay for childcare and help our households obtain federal subsidies so that when they graduate from us, they can continue to be able to work and take care of their children. Transportation is a huge problem in Collin County and in, well, anywhere in Collin County, but to our women, if they don't have transportation, then they can't go to work, get their kids to school, go to the doctor, go, you know. And you know it's difficult. Well, 50% of our households come to us either without transportation or with transportation should not be driven and is not safe for, for children. So we help them get transportation. We have a loaner car program where we have cars that we own, and we loan them to the women so that they can continue, and then we sell those loaner cars to the women for a very discounted rate with 0% interest so that when they graduate, they will be able to have, take care of themselves and they'll have assets. The key factor is, will they be able to graduate with a higher income? What we've learned in our 10 years is that if they just continue at minimum wage or at retail or at fast food, they will not. So our whole program, the success of it, is based on education to higher income, and that's financial literacy and vocational literacy. So we partner with Collin College. We help our women either complete their associate's degree or get certifications or other on-the-job training so that they can get into a job that's a vocation, not an hourly wage. The last area is health and wellness. That's mind, body, and spirit. 90% of our households are abuse survivors, so they come traumatized and so do their children. So we require counseling and offer other health and wellness services that we pay for because if they have impacted wisdom teeth, they can't afford to take them out, but they can't work either because of the pain. So we help to pay for those. So we remove barriers that they face in everyday life so that they can become fulfilling, self-sustaining citizens of our community. So what we're asking for is to expand. We already have a SUP for 1325 on the eastern side of our property. These are what I call Twinkie households. They're sister buildings. They look basically the same. So we, in our 1325 property, we got the permit in 2015, and then we remodeled two, our northern two units, in 2016 and 17, and housed in, we are a shared, shared housing model. So each household holds two families, which allows us two adults with all the children. It also allows us some accountability amongst our partners, and it allows us to have a safer overall community. In 21 and 22, we remodeled the southern two units, and so that the whole quad, that whole building, is now townhomes that look really, actually, very nice. Since 2016, that property, which was an empty office building, underutilized, vacant for quite some time, has provided safe, stable housing to 88 women and children, 46 women-led families with 42 children. We want to do the same with 1315. This is what it looks like. It's shared housing with, or shared space with all the common areas. So the kitchen and the living room and the outdoor areas would all be shared space. And then each household would have their own private bedroom so that they can have private time and family time. Each household would be in that one bedroom. If it's a larger family, we can, in some of our units and some of our bedrooms, we can house up to one mom with three or four kids if it's small kids, and then we have a smaller unit that's available for smaller families. Kids are really important. We have a children's program and a children's program coordinator. We use 40 developmental assets as our metric to measure their emotional and academic levels, and we help them get up to that level. The expansion of this would allow us to help even more children and more families. So that's what we're asking. We're asking to convert little by little the units, the office condos at 1315, the same way we did at 1325. Over the next, hopefully, we'll be able to begin this year so that by the end of the year, we will have four additional families in these two units that we're going to hopefully remodel. And then over the next two to three years, we will remodel the southern two office condos, and in the meantime, that's where we will office because we can't afford rents either. She's already shown you what it will look like. That's just another view. The two units for our four additional families, we hope to be able to get started just as soon as you vote with us. So I also have our wonderful architect here, Penny Diaz, and if you have any questions, I would love to invite you to ask them.
Thank you. Any question? Okay.
I do, I just have, this is out of curiosity. I totally support what you guys are doing for, for women and children. They, you know, abusive relationships really do hurt. It just doesn't just hurt the women, it hurts the children as well. I do have a question about how you qualify and how long is this period of time before graduation?
Thank you. That's a great question. So when they, when our, when our families come in, we sit with them and we set a graduation date. We want them to know what their future's going to look like and how much time they have with us. And it's typically six months for a single woman because we do have single woman with no children, and then a year for a mom with kids.
Wow.
Up to a year. And if they progress, if they're progressing, then at the three, the nine-month marker, they can actually apply, apply to extend that stay. For example, if they're taking classes at Collin College, and that extension would allow them to finish those classes and then move into their vocation, that's something that we would grant. So that's your second question. Your first question, how do they qualify? So we
Yeah. Where do, where do you get them from? I mean, where
They, okay, so now, in our 10th and 11th year, about 50% of them come directly to us, either through our website or through, they find us on the website and they call us directly. And the other 50% are referred from the other agencies. We collaborate with the other transitional housing agencies in the Plano area and up into Collin County, Samaritan Inn and Allen, up in that area as well. And then faith groups, and then the Plano Police have brought us several. And then other agencies refer to us because we want to fill every single bed.
Wow. How many beds are there? And, I mean, like, how many rooms in the, the proposed area? I hear, I heard it's four, right? That's the four that you
There's four townhomes. So are townhomes. That's actually a really good question. I'm pretty sure I would mess up the slides if I went back. But it's a two-story office building. So each office condominium is two stories. If you think of an accountant's office and the reception area is on the bottom floor because that's what they were, and then you walk up the stairs and then there's business accounting offices up there. That's what they are. Each one of the four units are separate individual condominiums, office condominiums. So we're just going to convert those office condominiums into townhomes. They don't have kitchens, they don't have full baths, they don't have enough baths. So we're going to add a full bath upstairs and, and we're going to add a full kitchen downstairs and convert those offices into bedrooms. So that's kind of how it looks. And then each office condo, which And then each office condo, which will now be a townhome, they look just like townhomes, will service two families, two households, two families. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Did, did I answer all your questions?
Yes. Actually, I have a whole bunch more, but I could always contact you later on.
Come, come see us and take a tour. We invite you all to come see us and take a tour.
Thank you.
We're very proud of our women.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Certainly. Thank you all.
You bet. Close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council. I'd like to just say, I know Ms. Collinsworth and I know the great work that she's done over the last decade here in Plano, and it's wonderful to, to have you in our community to help those in need, especially women and children. So thank you so much for all you do.
Mr. Mayor, again, I applaud all the work you're doing and I think clearly we don't have enough space to house those that are abused. And when I looked through the package, it adheres to the comp plan. Everything seems to be in order. It passed Planning and Zoning 7-0, so I'd like to make a motion to reapprove as presented.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion as second to approve Agenda Item Number One. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item number two, Presentation and Receive Public Comments on Proposed Revisions to the City of Plano's Drought and Emergency Response Plan and Water Management Plan.
Good evening. I'm Abby Owens. I'm the Assistant Director over Water and Wastewater in Public Works. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen today. This is going to be my third time talking about these plans, having been with the city. Um, okay. So the first plan is our drought and emergency response plan, and both of these are required by Texas Environmental Commission and Quality that we have to adopt and update every five years. We worked in 2019 with the surrounding cities in order to make sure we all moved to three drought stages. We are not recommending any changes to our drought plan at this time, but we always need to put these out for public comment, so. The second one is our water management plan, sometimes referred to as the conservation plan. Through this one, we have to update our gallons per capita daily goals, and there's also been updates to the education outreach initiatives that our edu, our environmental health and sustainability department provides. They've updated the rebates to have online applications. They've adjusted some of the free conservation items that they offer and updated some of the educational classes and programs that they offer as well. These are our proposed goals with, of course, I can never do this without one typo, and so you'll see that the five-year goal currently says 2024. It's supposed to say 2029, and then the 10-year goal would be 2034. What we've done is we've taken the goals from our previous plan and moved them to our five-year goal and then continued that downward trend for 10 years. You will notice that there's a difference between the historic five-year average and the baseline, and the reason is the original plan that we adopted in 2019 was actually during two and a half years of extreme drought where our water usage was very low. You all that have been here remember, it was been every other week watering once a week. It was very rough and so our usage was very low. And after any drought, you'll always see use come back, but usually not at a much higher rate. 2014, our actual historical aver, average was already over 200. So these are our proposed goals at this time. The baseline, the 2019, or 219, is based on the adopted plan that Texas Water Development Board has where they estimated our usage in 2020 and then calculated that out to be gallons per capita daily. So we use that because they recommend that you use some sort of adopted baseline that's already out there. So we took those and we continued our downward trend from there. Any questions?
I would just add, in 2029, we have a lot of incentive to be conserving at that time because we will be in year two of our five-year rolling average. So we want to see that gallons per capita per day really drop at that point because that'll help our water rates in the future. So just putting that in, out there.
Is there any special communication that, that we, that we try to do to, to communicate with our community about, you know, using less and things like that so that it's, you know, the, to get to those numbers? I mean, obviously, we, we, we got a lot of work to do.
Yeah. So yes, and I noticed that our water conservation education person is here this evening. They do a lot of active outreach, actually. Most of what we focus on is going to be reduction in outdoor water use because that's where we see the most waste, obviously, but also where we just find that's going to be where you're better able to reduce. They already have the water conservation rebate program for water-efficient toilets. We offer irrigation controllers at a discount and pressure-reducing valves was one that we added five years ago for some of our residents that are on the higher-pressure plane, and it lowers the pressure to extend the life of their appliances and their plumbing fixtures as well. But yeah, there's a pretty targeted outreach. And then municipal water district provides the Water My Yard tool where they push out weekly reminders about how much you should water or shouldn't water, and especially on those weeks like this week where it's rained, you really could turn your irrigation controllers off and it's ample amount of water. So we partner with them and provide that messaging, so. So there's our timeline for adoption. Originally, we were going to try to adopt on April 8th, but the eclipse kind of shifted that timeline a little bit, and so we're going to provide public comment all the way through April 1st, and that will give us enough time to get any sort of feedback we've received and then get it prepared and ready for the April 22 agenda. And then we continued from last year. We posted an online form where we not only have the plans posted online that you can review, but also there's a comment form, and I tried to make it as small as I could to fit on this slide for you, but you can go on there and fill out your name and information, and it goes directly to our inbox and we'll catalog all those comments that we receive. Tonight in person is our first public comment online, and then you can also mail them to the attention of our Public Works team, and it's going to be water conservation plan comments. Any questions?
Do I hit my, use my gavel?
If you want to gavel it in, that's great.
I'll do it really lightly. Public comment?
We do not have-
Does anyone want to comment on our water use plan over the next 10 years, right? Or more? Five. We'll go with five. Well, thank you. Then I'll close the public comment and, I know, I know. Well, yeah, that's right. This is it. And citizens can continue to comment through April 1st, or April 22nd? April 1st, using that online form. So we look forward to hearing feedback in regard to that. All right. Item three.
Item number three, Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Status Report and Three-Year Financial Forecast.
Good evening. Karen Rhodes Whitley, Budget Director. Tonight in your packet, you received our document, a look ahead. It's our financial forecast. This provides the city an opportunity to take a look ahead into the future for the next three years, to identify any challenges and opportunities that are facing the city. It also is the starting point for the development of the 2425 budget process. Wednesday, we will be rolling out the same thing. We have a budget kickoff with all our departments and they will start inputting their budgets. Every annual budget adopted by the city council has to be, is required to be balanced. So any fund deficits you see within the forecast will be rectified through the budget process this year. We have several challenges and opportunities ahead. Revenues have stabilized after a couple of years of increasing sales tax revenue, building and development-related revenue. Our revenues have been increasing. They are starting to stabilize out. The city is also maturing. We are starting to reach the build-out stage. Most of y'all know we're working on a fiscal roadmap plan right now, and that will be looking at all our different costs recovery, cost recovery and revenue policies. We are still facing ongoing inflationary pressure. A primary concern is still our commodity costs, equipment and vehicle costs plus those supply chain issues. We are still having those. We ordered a fire vehicle the other day. Not only did inflation hit it about 50%, it's also going to take 72 months for the vehicle to come in. 3% inflation rate has been included in the forecast. Also, our community investment program is still at full capacity right now. We had a meeting the other day. We have in play right now 500 million in different projects that are either at the design stage or construction phase. We are going to need additional personnel to handle the projects, to meet the demands. We are taking care of 2.8 billion in infrastructure. We also have planned next May 2025, a bond referendum. We are starting to run out of our street authority from when we did the bond referendum in 2021. This is just a look at the inflationary rates. Back last year, February, it was 6%. It's gone down to 3.2%. Before I came up here, I did look at the municipal cost index and it actually is less than this. At, this is the Euro, US Bureau of Labor Statistics. The MCI was 2% and construction inflation, according to the MCI, is 3.1%. On the general fund, right now, we have projected three days of working capital for 2425. As you're aware, we have a 30-day working capital balance. So putting in our revenue model and our expenditure models, right now, this is very preliminary, we are looking at probably $26 million shortfall between that three days and 30 days. For 2526, it will be 23.9. For the next year, it's 18. Now, with that being said, our primary revenue source, we do not have any projections from the central appraisal districts. We have been in contact with them. They will be giving us preliminary estimates. Collin County will be April 4th and the Denton County is going to be April 30th. So we're going to do the same thing we did last year. Once we receive that data, we will send you out a new revised general fund packet. Also, we do have included in here 2.5% salary increase. Also, we are facing challenges in our health, health insurance fund, and we have included a 15% increase on the city side, 15% on the employee side. Mentioned before, we've got 3% inflationary rate has been included. No new programs or service enhancements are included. The forecast does maintain the tax rate, which is our current tax rate of 41.76 cents throughout the forecast. Our debt rate is to remain at 11.5 cents for right now and the operating rate at 30.26 cents. This is including if the bond referendum passes in 2025, we have included additional authority into there. This is just a look at the general fund summary, the numbers that I was talking about, the additional revenues or program reductions to meet the 30 days. That's what we will be working on for the next couple of months. Our models are based on either population or economic factors. The planning department provides us with what the population's going to be. They are estimating an increase of 1.1% to 296,800. For 2425, a 0.8% increase at 299,000 and 0.6 in 2627. COG does do their populate, population estimates, and they will be given to us in April. So depending on what the revenue is and if it's directly related to population, we have direct and we have indirect. A direct population would be like trash collections, water revenue. Indirect population might be your rec center membership and municipal court fines. On the economic base, we are assuming 3% right now. Inflation's currently at 3.2%. A direct economy example might be hotel motel tax receipts. Indirect would be construction water revenues. We are planning a bond sale right now, $85 million, GO bond. We are having rating agency calls in April for that, and we should receive the proceeds by June. In addition, we are issuing 7 million in tax notes. That's to replace our telephone system, provide a fire station alerting system, and upgrade our video storage system. In addition, in each year of the forecast, we are estimating a bond sale of 85 million, and of course, that is contingent on the 2025 bond referendum passing. I already mentioned this, we are, do not forecast any change at all right now in the debt service rate of 11.50 cents. These are very preliminary estimates as far as assessed property value. Included in here, we have 5% for 2025, 3.5, 2627, 3.5 and 27. Our new property value growth projections is 500 million. I did talk to the central appraisal district the other day. As I mentioned before, we won't get the final stuff till April 4th, but I think we're a little short on that. It's probably going to be more like 700 million. Our tax rate's the 41.76 cents. One cent on your tax rate, though, is equal to $6 million this year. Sales tax has started flattening out. For 2324, we are estimating that we will come in at 114.6 million dollars. In February, we received a check for 7.7 million dollars. This was a decrease of 1.2 million dollars or less 13%. I will tell you this, there were several audit adjustments included within that check, and according to the state comptroller's office, we're going to be issued several more audits over the next couple of months. So with all that being said, we are keeping sales tax flat for the remaining seven months. Right now, we're only up $600,000 for the first five months. Included in these projections, we are mimicking everything we did the last year. And of course, all this will be updated as we go along. Actual for 2223 was 114.2 million. This is just a chart showing where our three-year averages every year, the last since 2017, 18. You'll see we have been gaining strength in sales tax until 2324. This is a look at the volatility of sales tax collections. Right now, if we were projecting maybe a recession happening in the next couple of years, this will seriously impact sales tax. As you can see, going back in 1920, 15, 16, 12, 13, those were recessions. And then, of course, 1920 was COVID. Building and development-related revenues are also flattening out. Last year in 2223, we collected $8 million. This year, we had included a 20% decrease. It's coming in a little bit more than that. We're reestimating it 6.5 million, which is a 19% decrease from the 2223 actuals. For 2425, we're estimating going down 15% and then constant throughout the forecast. We've had a leveling off of the major projects over the next several years is expected. Interest earnings is projected at 2.8 million dollars, which is what we actually collected for this year. A couple of items on the expenditure side are included. We have 2.5% included for civil service and non-civil service employees totaling 6.7 million dollars. This is only included in 2425. In the remaining two years, we just held it flat. Economic development incentive program. Last year during the, we used to give 2 cents on the tax rate. Last year during the budget process, that was cut back to 8.5 million dollars because that fund is doing very, very well. The capital maintenance transfer is estimated at 35.3 million dollars throughout the forecast, and that's what we are currently giving it. And we have included library books totaling 1.4 million dollars for library books and digital media. In addition, the community investment program, the C I- In addition, the community investment program, the CIP operating expenditures, are already included as funded within the forecast. They total $1.4 million over the three years. We have several major projects coming up. Fire Station 5 is an expansion. We're going to be renovating Fire Station Number 8. We have the Parkway Service Center, Fleet Service Center. All of them are going to be renovated. And then the Tom Mullenbeck Rec Center. Construction on that will be beginning in September of '24. What is not included within this forecast are any program enhancements related to increases for mandates, growth, increased services, technology requests, or any other causes during the three-year forecast. All discretionary items will be examined on their individual merit during the budget development process. We always ask in January, February timeframe, what the departments are thinking about as far as hiring full-time, part-time, what they think they're going to be requesting. We got in the list the other day. It's around 41 full-time positions totaling $4.2 million. Eight of them are for public safety. 12 are for CIP coming online, and then four other positions. And then the Water and Sewer Fund, there are 17 positions, and those are tied to capital over in the Water and Sewer Fund. In 23-24, an additional 38 positions were added totaling $4.3 million. This is a look at Water and Sewer. As everybody is aware, we pass on the increases that North Texas Municipal Water District passes on to us. All this information is from fall of 2024. Sorry, that should read fall of 2023. Our projections include a minimum water annual demand of 25.4. Before, it used to be 26.7, and now it's down to 25.4. All the increases are scheduled to be passed on. We got water at 12.4%, 11.8%, and 15% in 2027. They're saying our sewer's going to go up 7.3% in 24-25. 25-26 is 12.8, and then 26-27 is nearly 14%. And then Upper East Fork Interceptor is 7.9%, 17.5% and 11.3%. We did receive back in October, $5.2 million for the 22-23 water variable cost rebate. And then in November, we received $1.2 million back from them for water supply and mandatory contract surplus funds. Sorry, that was in March '24. We do have a reserve fund over there at $5.8 million. We use that to counteract any kind of increases. Now, we need to talk, we will have ongoing discussions regarding the Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Program. I know we discussed this this last year. We have several very large sewer projects. The Dallas North Truck Phase 2 is now, the total for that has grown to $17.8 million. Spring Creek Interceptor Phase 2 is $18.3 million. And then the Spring Creek Interceptor Phase 3 now totals $17.3. All of those are expected to be funded out of Water and Sewer. So here's your water fund right now, Fund 36. We only have, we have $20 million that we can give to Water and Sewer for the pay-as-you-go. As you can see, in 24-25, we start going into the red on water. The sewer projects are even worse. We're going into the red. What we are thinking, and of course, we're going to bring all this back, is packaging those big projects and issuing revenue debt for that. We will be bringing all that back. Just on the other forecasts, all the funds are doing very well. The Convention and Tourism Fund, hotel motel taxes have, once again, gone up after going very far down after COVID. The Municipal Drainage Fund, we have some very large projects that are going to be coming up on that. Also, we have bond covenants that we have to meet. So most likely, we will need a rate increase in 25-26. Sustainability Environmental Services had run deficits for three years in a row. We hired in new gen strategies and solutions last year and presented everybody with a plan. We went up $4 this year for the 95 and what's 68-gallon cart. In the forecast, you will see a dollar-per-year increases, but this keeps us within our financial policies. All the other funds, Record Bobbing Fund, Golf Course Fund, all doing great. The Capital Maintenance Fund, it's doing great. We like to keep $20 million in the fund balance, and you see that here. In addition, we have a goal of 75%. The transfer over there, we're kind of short, but in the meantime, it will start growing up. So I'm not too worried about this fund. Let's talk about your budget calendar real quick. July 24th, the city manager will be delivering his recommended budget and proposed CIP. Copies will be made at all the libraries and websites. August 12th is a Monday evening. You will have a presentation on the CIP. We also have scheduled public hearings on the operating budget and community investment program. You will also be approving the tax rule. And at that meeting is when you discuss the proposed tax rate that you were thinking about passing on in September. It has to go into the paper. August 15th is a Thursday evening. We have a city council work session on the budget. Also included is grant funding on that night that you will review. Thursday night, August 22nd, we have a budget town hall meeting. And then on September 9th, public hearing on the tax rate, and the city council will adopt the operating budget, the CIP, and also set the tax rate. And then Monday, October 1st, we begin the new fiscal year. What questions do you have?
Mayor and Council, I want to give a couple of other quick items. I know everybody's been waiting, the compensation philosophy study. I anticipate probably May. Sometime, I will have LaShawn Ross bring back the results of where we are with that compensation philosophy study. So I would note that you, I'm using the word compensation, not just salary, but compensation philosophy study. We'll be bringing that back for discussion for council at that time. But I want, I want everybody to hear aloud and clear one thing. Revenues are flattening. The explosive growth that we've had in the '70s, '80s, '90s, 2000s is not something that we are experiencing any longer. We are flattening with our growth, with our revenue growth. So finding sustainable methods that we can look at, that five-year financial forecast is going to become a critical study for us. And we are in year zero of that. So we are still doing our homework, working on strategic plans. But as Plano always does, we plan well. We execute our plans year over year, and we develop solid paths forward. So that five-year fiscal roadmap is something Shelley Seymour is heading up for us, and we'll have more on that later on this year as well. But that flattening is occurring. We still have the last elements of development still happening, some infill projects, some redevelopment. But overall, we're starting to see that flattening of that revenue that we anticipated. So it's going to be very important for us to make sure that as we move forward, we're doing so with a sustainable mindset of what revenue growth is going to look like into the future. So with that, I'll give any questions to Karen.
Karen, thank you for that snapshot.
Thank you.
And we look forward to digging into the details.
Sounds good.
For the next six months. So. So Shawna, would you mind taking a picture of this scene at the dais that is going to change after tonight? So we are, we're about to. Yeah, let's, we're going to a new location for about six months while we renovate this council chambers that's been overdue for 40 years.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is still up to three minutes per speaker. With the 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda, the council may not discuss these items, but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. We have one speaker, Alex Stein. Alex Stein?
This is going to be a future park. There was nothing here but trees and the creek and the grass.